So, welcome to everybody that is here tonight. This is the City of Iowa City Formal Meeting for the 1st of September, and we're going to get it started with roll call, please.
Fergus?
Here.
MEMs?
Here.
Calee?
Yeah.
Taylor?
Here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas? Weiner?
Here.
Well, welcome, welcome, welcome to everybody. And so this is the City of Iowa City, like I said, our formal meeting. And I'm going to get started with some proclamations, which is item number two on the agenda. Two A is going to be the Americans with Disabilities Act 30th Anniversary Day. Whereas the American with Disabilities Act was passed on July 26, 1990 to ensure the civil rights of persons with disabilities. And whereas July 26, 2020 will mark the 30th anniversary of the signing of the ADA, which expanded access and opportunities for people with disabilities. And whereas the ADA has done this by reducing barriers and changing perspectives and increasing full participation in community life. And whereas the full promise of the ADA will only be reached if we remain committed to continue our efforts to fully implement this act. And whereas Iowa City affirms the principles of equality and inclusion for persons with disabilities as set forth and embodied in the ADA. And whereas the Iowa City government and residents are proud to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of our residents with disabilities. And whereas throughout the year and on the anniversary of the American with Disabilities Act, the City of Iowa City celebrates and recognizes the progress that has been made by reaffirming the principles of equality and inclusion and recommitting our efforts to reach full ADA compliance. Now therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, hereby proclaim July 26, 2020, as Americans with Disabilities Act 30th Anniversary and call upon all community members to observe this day with appropriate ceremonies and activities that celebrate the contributions of persons with disabilities and to renew our commitment to the American with Disabilities Act. And today, we're going to have this proclamation received by my good friend. And I don't know if, I don't know if he's going to be appearing here. Let's see.
My voice is here, at least.
All right, great. You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I just wanted to thank everybody for allowing the proclamation to be read today on behalf of myself and everybody else on the committee.
Well, really appreciate you being a part of this day. And we really do appreciate the efforts that you've done within the disabilities world. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry I got kicked out there for a second.
Yes. Is there anything else you would like to say?
No, that's it. I just wanted to jump in real quick and give my thank you, and I'll let you guys continue on with me.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 2B is the Stono Rebellion. And this proclamation is going to be received by Bijou. Whereas this Stono Rebellion was a slave rebellion that began on September 9, 1739, in the colony of South Carolina. And whereas it was the largest slave uprising in the British mainland colonies, with 25 colonists and 35 to 50 Africans killed. The uprising was led by Native Americans, who were likely from the Central Africa, African Kingdom of Congo. And whereas their leader, Jeremy Caddo, was a literate enslaved person. He led 20 other enslaved Khondalise in an armed march south from the Stono River to Florida. They had signs that read liberty and were beating drums and singing. They were bound for Spanish Florida, where the Spanish had promised them freedom and land at the St. Augustine. And whereas Jeremy, Jimmy, and his group recruited nearly 60 other enslaved persons before being intercepted and defeated by the South Carolina Militia near the Indiso River. And whereas a few of them that were captured were able to escape and travel another 30 miles before battling a week later with the Militia. And whereas most of the captured persons were executed, the surviving few were sold to markets in the West Indies. And whereas in response to the rebellion, the South Carolina Legislature passed the Negro Act of 1940, which restricted slave assembling, education, and movement. It also enacted a 10-year moratorium against importing African slaves because they were considered more rebellious and established penalties against slaveholders, harsh treatments of slaves. And whereas African-American writers have long mentioned the Stono Rebellion, including W.E.B. Du Bois and his 1903 classic, The Souls of Black Folks, which includes Caddo of Stono. In a list of those early slaves who, prior to 1750, still had the fire of African freedom in their blood, now therefore, I, Mayor Bruce Teague, hereby recognize the Stono Rebellion that occurred on September 9, 1739, and these early African-American heroes who fought for freedom who were given death and would encourage each of you to learn more about the rebellion and the life of Jimmy Caddo. And here to receive this is Bijou. Welcome.
I am a member of the Human Rights Commission. I would like to thank Mayor Teague for this proclamation on the Stono Rebellion. On September 9, at 7:00 PM, Step Africa, a virtual premiere lead sponsored by Hancher, will celebrate the 281st anniversary of the Stono Rebellion with the World Premiere of Stono. The 30-minute premiere will be followed by a live panelist discussion about the work itself, the history behind it, and the ongoing work for social justice. Iowa City Mayor Bruce Teague will be among the panelists to provide his perspective. So, please, plan to register for this free event by visiting Eventbrite and search Step Africa Stono. Registration for this free event is encouraged. Thank you.
Thank you, Bijou.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to consent, calendar consent items, number three through eight. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm off.
Bye, Salih.
Second, MEMs.
All right, anyone from the public would like to address anything within the consent agenda? If you would like so, please raise your hand, and I will call upon you. And if you're on the phone, you can dial *9, and your hand will raise, and I'll be able to call upon you. And also, I want, just so that individuals that are attending the meeting today, I want to make sure that you understand that the consent agenda is our listed items. So, if you want to address something there, after we take a vote on these items, there will be open comment time immediately following. And then if there are any items that are on our regular agenda for the night, when I call upon that item, prior to us discussing that item, community members will be able to make a comment. So, all right, if you want to address council on anything that is involved in the consent agenda, I'm going to call upon you now. I'm going to call on Renee. All right, I think we can, if you speak, we may be able to hear you.
Hello?
We can hear you. Hello, welcome.
Yes, just to make sure, if I wanted to speak about events that happened this weekend that are not on the consent agenda as of now, do I speak with that now or later on?
Immediately following this one, it'll be open comment time.
All right. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anyone like to address anything on the consent agenda right now? Please raise your hand. I'm going to call on Mohammed, followed by Chrissy.
Hello?
Hello. Welcome.
Hi, my name is, hi, yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Teague. My name is Mohammed Traori, and I've lived in Iowa City since I was about three years old. I have been paying a lot of attention to the things going on in the city over my life here, and I saw on the consent agenda there was something about the June 3 protest incident that made national news. What I would like to say about that is, in terms of the actual process you guys are going through for investigating the things that occurred on that night, where exactly are we on that? And are there any charges that are stemming from this event, either towards protesters or towards the police presence that was there? I had many friends that were there. Unfortunately, was not able to attend that night. And from the videos that they were live streaming to me, I didn't see any of them engaging in anything hostile towards police or outright trying to attack anyone. Yet, they were flash banged and had tear gas thrown at them, and one of them hurt their elbow pretty severely. So, I would just like to know, what are your next steps on this process?
And this is a time where we have community members speak to council and share your thoughts with us. A few other things that you mentioned there, we will have on our agenda later on. There's a few Black Lives Matter items on our agenda throughout the night. And so, I would encourage you to please stay around and listen to those items. Anything else you would like to say to council?
There's nothing else I'd like to add at this time. I will likely be sticking around and be commenting on the other things later on.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
Yes. I'm going to call on Chrissy.
Mayor, and members of the city council, I'm just, I believe that this is the right moment to comment on the correspondence that I submitted?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I hope that you will consider joining both the Agency Impact Coalition and the Local Homeless Coordinating Board of Johnson County in sharing your opposition to the proposed rule change by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. One in every three transgender and non-binary people experience homelessness at some point in their lives. This rate increases to nearly one in two for transgender and non-binary people who identify as black, Middle Eastern, multiracial, and undocumented. Access to safe and secure housing is sometimes all that stands between transgender people and deadly violence. That violence disproportionately affects people of color, with 91% of victims of fatal anti-transgender violence in 2019 being black women. Please join us in submitting your comments and your opposition to this proposed rule change. It's detailed in the letter that I submitted. And if you do have any questions or concerns or would like a further discussion, please reach out to either myself or Adam Robinson for the Agency Impact Coalition and for myself with the Local Homeless Coordinating Board. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Chrissy. Would anyone else like to address council on any item in the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. And sorry, I am navigating a few screens here. So, council discussion. Roll call, please.
I just want to ask, since the item for the increasing the water fee, you know, consent agenda, and we are setting the public hearing, I just want to know that this item will be on the regular agenda next time? Or will be on the consent agenda?
It'll be on the regular agenda because it's a public hearing.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
Any other council discussion items?
Yeah, I would like to ask, and I don't know, since this isn't necessarily a vote, but if agreement to ask the mayor to send a letter in support of Chrissy King and Ellie's comments about our disagreement with HUD's rule changes?
I would be in favor of that.
Sound good.
Yeah, I read what, I read the correspondence, and I would be happy to do that.
Thank you.
I'll have staff assistants, of course. All right, any, anything else? Roll call, please.
Fergus?
Yes.
MEMs?
Yes.
Calee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. We have some late correspondence here. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
I'm off.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not used to that. MEMs?
Yes.
Calee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
All right, motion passed seven to zero.
Mayor, could I just add that 70 pages of late hangouts the day before the meeting is an awful lot to deal with? Just, just to comment, that's all. I'd like to share that.
Sure. We're on item nine, which is time for community comment. And this is the time where we ask people from the public to come and speak to council about any item that is not listed on the agenda. There are several more items that we'll get to and before each of those items will allow community to address council. And so, we ask people to keep their comments to three to five minutes. Right now, I often look at hands and may adjust that depending on timing. But if anyone would like to address council now, for anything that's not on the agenda, now is the time. I'm going to start with Renee, followed by Tessa.
Hi, I would like to start what I'm speaking about tonight with a poem that I wrote today while I was thinking of what happened to me and fellow protesters last night. I called this poem "The Full Moon Tells Its Truth." My heart pounding to the rhythm of the slave patrol's loud footsteps, I watched as my brother ran to freedom down the plantation. I ran after the slave masters' goons, who disrespected and assaulted my black body, illuminated beneath that bright white full moon. I screamed, we screamed, all to no avail. The slave patrol wanted my brother's black body submissive and confined in the master's jail. City leaders were so quick to condemn the graffiti, yet have been silent about the violence and harm enacted upon young BIPOC individuals this weekend. Out of the seven individuals targeted this weekend, four were BIPOC. Moreover, a gender non-conforming person was subjected to mental, emotional, and physical harm by Iowa City law enforcement. I hope I do not have to explain how punitive it is to send young people, especially young BIPOC individuals, kids at that, for simply exercising their First Amendment, when many of them feel that their elected officials have yet to make any tangible, physical change. Instead of change, last night, along with other protesters, young black and Muslim women, who are raised in Iowa City, were physically assaulted by the Johnson County Police, UIPD, ICPD officers, and detectives. Instead of seeing change, I was pushed off my bike by an officer and injuring my knee as I crashed into another biker, while the officer attempted to drag me off my bike by grabbing my backpack. The irony of the unbelievable police violence we faced over this weekend as we protested this exact issue is not lost upon me, and I hope the public shares the same sentiment. The actions of law enforcement this weekend and the silence from our own city leadership proves that property matters more than the lives of young individuals who are simply fighting to envision a world where our humanity doesn't come second. To make it clear once more for those who don't seem to understand why we were protesting this weekend, I'm here to relay these points to council and the public once again. One, we demand that the video of the tear gas events of June 3 must be released. Two, the police committee that council approved earlier this summer must be created. Three, council must not authorize the procurement of what we call, what we like to call, the iPhone 12 tasers. And four, that if council truly supports the Black Lives Matter movement and what has been happening in this city for this whole summer, recommend that the bogus charges against protesters be dropped. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. We're going to have Tessa, followed by Leanna. Tessa? I don't see your, we can't hear you. I'm going to go to Leanna, and then I'll go back to Tessa. Welcome, Tessa, and we're asking everyone to keep their comments three to five minutes, please.
So, is Tessa going, or am I going?
Oh, you can go, Leanna. Sorry, I said.
Okay. No, you're fine. All right, well, first, I would like to thank council for giving me the opportunity to speak. I would like to preface this by saying I am coming purely from a place of respect, and I am not representative, nor am I speaking on behalf of IFR in any capacity. However, I do want to call and make it explicitly clear as a reminder to all of you council members that your primary position in leadership on city council is to represent your constituency, is to hear the voices of your constituents, and is to represent them to the best degree that you possibly can. You have been voted into office to put into this position purely for that reason, without any, any other form of, without any other agenda, so to speak. And the city is speaking to you. On June 16, you signed demands in regards to IFR for a reason. If you did not want to implement them, nor if you wanted to proceed with them in a timely manner, that should not have been the case. However, now we are sitting in, now September, and you have yet to discuss how to reconstruct and defund the police. Now, we are discussing the fiscal budget for 2021, and you have had all summer long, when no one has been in the streets, when IFR has not been up protesting. But behind closed doors, you demand that they form a police review board. You demand that they provide you names of legitimate professors and organizers for you to seek deference to, and how to best restructure the police department. But to the community, you come off as, we are trying to do this in the most timely manner with your involvement. Why do you need three months? Why do you need three months of community input public forums? That is something with how timely and time-sensitive this issue is in regards to proposing the fiscal budget for 2021, that is something you can condense down into a matter of two weeks. That is not something that is necessitated to have weeks, to have every meeting spaced out week upon week upon week. Right? That is a way of kicking the can down the road. That is another form of council not taking these demands seriously. With all due respect, Mayor Protop, last city council meeting, you brought up that you would be willing to review the, or that you did review the incident, the videos from June 3, and relay that information to the community. But at the end of the day, that's not transparent. I believe it was Ms. Laura, I believe I could be mistaken on that, who called you out on that. And you, all council members have been doing some sort of political gaslighting or pushing all of these agenda items further and further down the road, and that's not acceptable. If you do not want to implement these items, you should not have signed them on June 16. Those demands were written there. You voted to approve and resolve those demands. You do not need three months to hear from community input. Also, regardless of how and what official policies you guys have listed in who may speak at what meetings, or who may attend what community public input meetings, this issue, people being in the streets constantly and consistently, the city is speaking to you. They are already telling you what they want. For you to limit the amount of members, city council members, that may attend these public input community forums is inherently detrimental. The city isn't speaking to three of you. We do not want to speak to three of you. We want all of you to listen and understand fundamentally what we are asking for specifically. The demands have been made clear. The entire city at this point is in a position where it feels like a lot of bureaucracy, profuse bureaucracy. There should be emergency meetings upon emergency meetings to get these demands in place, given the fact that you have not met the resolution in the timescape that you had initially planned for early in the summer. Again, I say this all from a place of respect, but I know bureaucratically, how often things get pushed further and further down the road, and how behind closed doors is a different matter than what's related to the community. And honestly, and quite respectfully, I've had enough. Most of America has had enough. Iowa City has had enough. And I really urge you all to reconsider the meaning and the importance of the position that you all hold in advocating and committing to the, to committing to your community, I suppose, is the best way. I'm going to close that up. So, thank you again for letting me speak.
Yes, thank you. All right, and I'm going to ask then Mayor Protim help me with keeping time and saying.
I'm doing it.
Thank you. I appreciate it. All right. And so, the next individual that we're going to have is, let's bring Tessa back, followed by Mohammed.
Hey, thanks for the second chance. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. I just wanted to say I read the document from the police department requesting the additional money dedicated to tasers. There were a few things in this document that caused me concern.
Hey, Tessa.
I think, I think hearing them say that it was a de-escalation device is a lot different than the de-escalation that I am familiar with and that I would like to see. The beginning of the document says it was meant to be, to use for people who are mentally ill. This is something that I think using this kind of money, this $300,000, could go towards preventative programming, staff, doing things about mental illness before it becomes a crisis in the community. The other, the other thing I noticed in the beginning of this document was that it was meant for people who, those, those who cannot feel pain or are less sensitive to pain. And this is something that's well documented in evidence in healthcare and policing. This is hugely subject to racial bias and, and people's perceptions of who can feel pain or not. I just, the whole thing screamed, they're not getting it. This is not, not the kind of reform we need. I thought that the ending was kind of a veiled threat, that the city, if we don't do this, we have to use more, more extreme methods or something, is how it ended. I don't have it in front of me, but I just thought it was a little, a little concerning. And, and the, and the justification that these tasers need to be updated every five years or something, it just seems like an endless draining on our budget to weaponize the police. And it's just something we're going to have to come across in another five years if we want to arm the police department with tasers. And it's something that I would like to see that money be used in a more sustainable investment in the community and avoid these kinds of conflicts where the de-escalation tactic is tasers. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Tessa. I did, I tried to interrupt to let you know that that item is on our formal agenda coming up later, but I'm not sure that you heard me. So, in the, in the future, if someone is talking about an item that's not on the agenda, I'm going to interrupt in. And we're going to silence you, and then.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Oh, you're fine. Yeah, I don't think you heard me, but thank you. I'm going to call Mohammed, followed by David. And there's a David without a last name. We'll be the next up.
Hello, Mohammed. Welcome. Hello. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So, I would just like to speak on protests again and demands that have been referenced. So, the demands that were voted on, I do agree that because the city did vote on actually looking at these demands and actually implementing them, that they should be doing more to really follow through with this process. I have been following the protest events, and as someone that's seen the increase in demands, I think that those should be definitely treated as a separate issue. And I heard about the events from last night with the laser pointers and just everything going on in the chaos. And I've noticed that nationwide, as well as protests continue. I'm someone that really reads a lot into history and trends. And what I have noticed with all of that is that, I mean, since the beginning of June, I was on record telling everyone I knew that there is no way these protests would stop before the, maybe even the end of the year. And the reasoning for that was that I can tell that in a lot of government positions in our society, we have an issue with people in power saying they're going to do one thing and then really dragging their feet on it, like what happened with Kim Reynolds and the whole thing with felon voting rights, and just a number of other things over decades. And I say all this to just. And I say all this to just say that I think that because this is a government by the people, for the people, we should really respect the opinions of the people. And when we say that we have heard the people, that people in power should truly hear them and truly heed their words because it is our votes that put you into power. So we need to remember that at the end of the day, if this was like a company per se, we are the employers and the people in power are our employees technically. So just keep that in mind, please, going forward and just know that when a vast majority of the people in your town, city, or whatever you're presiding over is asking for specific things and you say that you are hearing them, please truly hear them and heed their calls and heed their words. And thank you so much for the opportunity once again, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mohammed. We're gonna have David without a last name and then David, drum step.
Hi there. I'm just talking in regards to item 8C of the correspondence. Is now a good time to do so?
We did pass on that item, but I'm going to allow it if I see counsel okay in it. I'm seeing not enough heads. Please proceed.
Perfect. Thank you. City council members, since my email expressing my concerns about our downtown homelessness and transient issues, things have continued to get worse. In the two, past two weeks alone, a downtown homeless man was caught bathing and washing his clothes in the Ped Mall fountains. Another downtown transient man was arrested in the Ped Mall for repeatedly exposing his genitals to people passing by. A group of transients set up camp in the Ped Mall harassing and threatening people walking by. A homeless man stabbed a store clerk at a deli mart, resulting in an attempted murder. In addition, the transient man robbed a business in the Ped Mall and while fleeing the scene, managed to sexually assault three females. Due to these ongoing and escalating issues, I have called the police on numerous occasions, but many of the times the situation isn't solved and residents and businesses are left to deal with the same problems the very next day. The city and police need to do more and take more of a proactive report, report, approach to this rising issue. Business is hard enough downtown with the pandemic and the protests. It becomes nearly impossible when you add homelessness, transits and crime into the equation. Downtown is at an inflection point with many storefronts empty and things must change. There's a difference between panhandling homeless and transient agitators, with the latter not even asking for money but demanding it and harassing people walking by. Those are the ones that need to go. Dumping alcohol and confiscating their drugs doesn't work. And if they're going, if they're not going to be arrested, they at least need to be removed from downtown. As a downtown resident and business owner, we need to have a safe and secure downtown and not allow our residents to be harassed and yelled at. Businesses can't have employees concerned for their safety leaving work after dark. I believe in a well-funded police force, but they must be in an effective police force. I want to implore our city council to use the police to protect, secure and keep downtown residents and businesses safe. I would like to see the ICPD do more to create a safe and secure downtown. We must clean up our downtown before another scenario like the ones I described happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, David. We're gonna have the next David, followed by Amel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council as well for letting us speak on this. So you know, the last week has felt like a tale of two different worlds really from our perspective. Like, like we've talked about with a few of you, you know, we had some really inspiring meetings with four counselors during last week and we left those feeling really helpful. And so thanks to Counselor Mims, Thomas Weiner and Burgess for holding those with us. You know, we met privately as a team later and we're, at that point, we're even thinking about, you know, shifting some IFR strategy to highlight the cooperativeness and forward-thinking work of council at that time. As we've talked about and as everyone knows, unfortunately, things changed pretty drastically once UIPD took a hard stance on value of property over people's lives this weekend. Once we heard about some of the arrests being made, I mean, I was in the middle of the crowd. You could feel the emotional stance of folks there just shift really drastically and rightfully so. You know, white protesters were arrested, but, but young BIPOC protesters made up the majority of those arrested last weekend and they're specifically targeted. On Saturday, Renee gave a really positive and uplifting talk about the good work of council to, to, to the crowd, but the crowd was already focused on UIPD at that point after we heard about all the arrests. A couple of counselors have had articles in the media today about protesting and both insisted that Black Lives Matter, but saying it without the requisite action is, is meaningless to us. Both followed their statement of support for Black Lives Matter, not with support for the BIPOC lives that just experienced the violence inside a jail cell, but they followed it with their support for the sanctity of property. One counselor briefly mentioned how arresting protesters is an act of escalation, which we agree with, but they refused to go so far as to condemn that. They save their empathy for the buildings with paint on them instead of empathy for the people whose psychological, emotional, physical and sexual health were just put at risk, especially our most vulnerable people. We had the four out of seven BIPOC folks, part of the arrestees this weekend, and we had a gender non-conforming person who was arrested as well. And Renee spoke about that, about the specific dangers that, that face those folks when they go to jail. So I speak only for myself in this, but I'm, I'm willing to buy the argument that both sides could be seen as escalating right now, which is something one of the counselors mentioned in their, in their article in the media today. But if we are both escalating, IFR is escalating by hurting buildings and the city is escalating by hurting people. We're asking two different questions. The city is asking, why are we hurting buildings? And IFR is asking, why are we hurting people? And I will happily fight the rest of my life on this side of the argument. To experience more police violence while we're protesting police violence, that's large steps backwards. And our supporters knew that and they responded in a way that they knew how. In 1967, Martin Luther King wrote, "It is not an accidental thing. It reflects a society that cares more about property than people, and so they hurt what you all find most precious." Further, we spent this whole weekend hearing from person after person about why graffiti, but not one person in power has asked why the arrests. We understand that you do not control UIPD, but you're all the most powerful voice in the city and your words communicate to us that your primary concern is the property. And so this is what we mean when we say the current system and those who uphold and protect property over people. Whether you personally agree with graffiti or not is only one small detail, but how you respond to the graffiti in relationship to the arrests tells us everything. When people choose, when people in power choose to condemn the graffiti before the arrests, they've chosen their side. They have chosen that some paint on a building is more important than the physical, emotional, psychological and sexual health of the most vulnerable people of the city. They have made a clear statement that the only way they can imagine accountability and consequence is through the violence of police and jails. And the focus on property paved the way for more arrests and more police violence like we saw Sunday and yesterday. So the arrests that you all have condoned and supported have just escalated this far more than we ever could escalate with a paint can. During a meeting yesterday with community leaders, the majority of which was community leaders sort of cornering Renee for two hours and peppering her with five or six or seven critiques and reprimands all at the same time, one community leader said, "There needs to be consequences." And that's a conversation that we would love to have. Consequences are an essential part of the future that we want to build. But when your morality only allows you to imagine consequences that involve the violence and punitiveness of a jail cell, then I literally feel sorry for you. We have other ways of holding each other accountable. The ones we're imagining have a morality that rejects the idea that a young BIPOC person deserves to be punished with violence for anything, especially when that thing is allegedly putting paint on a building. The fact that we have to have this moral argument with a group of liberal adults is, is heartbreaking to me. The fact that you're not thinking of the physical, emotional, psychological and sexual health of a young, gender non-conforming BIPOC people that you are condoning going to jail, I, I just have no words for how disappointing that is. So I'm running out of energy and time for this right now, but if, if y'all are having questions about why it's so important to put people before the graffiti on a building, please read some Martin Luther King this weekend. His last book was called Where We Go From Here. He talks a lot about it. He has a compilation of essays from '67 called The Trumpet of Consciousness and he has an essay in there called On Attacking Property. Please read it. Before we finish, just wanna support all the demands that Renee was putting through, the list of four. Also, I want to thank Counselor Thomas for bringing up during the work session, the traffic safety issue and how that intersects with IFR goals. I really appreciate you bringing that up, Counselor Thomas. And same shout out to Counselor Mims for proposing those meetings and getting those moving like Leanna said.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Amel, followed by Stephanie. Amel.
Can you hear me?
I sure can.
Okay, perfect. I just wanna know, is this a good time that I can talk about my experience in the youth panel for the police chief interviews?
This is open comment and it's not on our agenda, so yes.
Okay, perfect.
You have three to five minutes.
Perfect. So I wanna start off with saying thank you for allowing me to be able to have this time to speak out about this, Mayor Teague and to the council. So I've lived in Iowa City for 20 years of my life. I grew up here for a really long time and I got a really awesome opportunity to be involved in the youth forum to interview the new police chief candidates for Iowa City. I'm gonna be sending an email to Mayor Teague along with the city manager and the rest of the council on more negative opinions that I had. I wanna use this time to express my support for Dustin Liston, the candidate from El Paso. He was incredible. He did such a great job answering his interview questions. He, he has all of the good, good ideas for around here and having been in El Paso for 20 plus years, I think he's so ready to take on all of the issues in Iowa City. I can tell that he really wants the job and he really cares about the city and he's really wanting to make positive changes about it. I was super impressed with his education. He has his bachelor's in psychology and sociology, which I think is super important for someone to have, especially as a police chief. The way that he answered the question shows that he understands the psychological impact that policing has had on African Americans and people of color over the last hundreds of years. I also was impressed that he had his master's in criminal justice along with attending the FBI Academy. I could tell that he truly cares about mental health and trying to fix things. He had laid out a plan with involving social work that he had done in El Paso that works really well and I was really impressed with that. So I just wanted to say that I really hope that he is elected for the next police chief. He was wonderful and hopefully he will be the next one. And then my next thing I wanted to talk about, and this might catch me, get me a little bit of flack, but it kind of has to do with the things that happened last night with the protests. I am really concerned about the IFR leadership right now, although I agree with everything that they have been asking for and things like that and their demands. Last night, watching videos, I saw people sticking their middle fingers up at police officers, giving them crap about, you know, the way they looked and stuff like that, and I didn't really agree with that. I don't think that that is a positive way to move forward and ask for change. And I understand being really angry and things like that. But as someone who has lived in this community for 20 years, I will admit I've been arrested a couple of times and I've had positive experiences with the police and I've had extremely negative experiences with the police. And I think that the IFR kind of needs to get older people within the community involved more rather than, you know, some of like the 18, 19-year-olds, where I do think that is a super important population. But I know that a lot of African Americans around my age have felt a little bit differently about the way they've been going about things. And I agree completely with what David and what Renee said about feeling like the council is valuing the buildings and the city is valuing the buildings more than they're valuing the human lives. I think it is absolutely ridiculous that the Board of Regents is coming down on the university for how they're handling the protests. It's much bigger than that. So I hope that we really can figure something out because it doesn't feel like anything is happening soon enough for their liking. And so, yeah, that's all I wanted to say. This is my first time doing this, so I'm sorry if I kind of blabbed, but thank you guys for giving me your time to speak.
Thank you, Amel. We're gonna have Stephanie followed by Maya, but I also want to ask people to keep their comments, maybe to two to four minutes because at 8:00 PM, we will have a hard, fast stop. Welcome, Stephanie.
Thank you and for allowing me this opportunity to speak. First of all, my name is Stephanie Hoffel and I'm one of the co-founders of the Iowa City Mutual Aid Collective. As a wellness support person, I have been in attendance at almost every protest that has happened in the city. I was there for the events last night and I want to corroborate and just express my abject horror at the way those children, as a grandmother and a mother, and you know, not even in my official capacity for this organization aside, as a grandmother and a mother in this community, the way that giant group of police officers just bum rushed those really young people. It was horrible to see. I mean, I myself got pushed out of the way because, you know, I'm just an old grandma. It don't matter. But it was really horrifying to watch and I really cannot believe that the city council is putting the importance of these buildings above the fact that that happened. I'm like, I was more prepared to be official in this conversation, but listening to this, I just, you had to be there. It was terrible. And I support these kids and, you know, like the speaker said before, there are, there are adults out there and we're watching and we understand the anger and we understand the frustration and we understand that sometimes you're not always going to use tactics that everybody approves of. But I think at this point it's necessary because nobody's listened to them previously. I just, as a group, our collective, I wanted to come on board and say our collective also feels that as we've watched the, the, the political thing, mechanizations in this town, I feel that the city, the group as a whole feels that the city council is not moving forward in good faith, maybe that they're saying one thing and doing another thing or maybe that I had more of a feeling that the city council was working in good faith with the IFR until last night or the, the events of this weekend. It, it was really, I mean, I myself was pulled over for a ridiculous reason, just because I was driving home from the protests. And the officer, I thought it was really interesting that the officer that pulled me over shown his flashlight in my passenger's face and then the next night protesters were being arrested for the same thing. And I'm just really kind of frustrated with it, but I do appreciate you giving me this opportunity to share that frustration with you. And I'm gonna let you.
We're gonna have Maya followed by Elizabeth.
Hello. I just wanted to share that I am extremely disappointed by the event that took place last night. I am really, really tired of seeing police protecting cement instead of people, you know, physical bodies. I think that the city council needs to do more to protect and invest in black, indigenous and people of color because we are your constituents. Please, please adhere to the Iowa Freedom Riders' demands and protect the people who voted for you. I really think that you will be on the wrong side of history if you continue to act within your position of power in a way that upholds a system of slavery. A black person is five times more likely to be stopped without just cause than a white person. That is not right. Please stop upholding the system and follow through on the Iowa Freedom Riders' demands. And just to comment on David with no last name, the stuff that he brought up, any money that you wanted to give to the police could be used to invest in low-income housing so that people do not have to be experiencing homelessness and having to find shelter in downtown. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Elizabeth followed by Audrey.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth. I just wanted to comment on, on the things that was said by David earlier. I would be remiss if I didn't say something because the crim, the criminalization of homelessness only adds to problems of homelessness and adds to problems within the community by instead giving people housing and places to be. It doesn't solve the issue at all. And as the person before me already addressed, the things that should be done. As um the person before me already addressed, um the things that should be done is money should be given to. Um, community organizations that can improve upon issues of social inequality instead of policing and criminalizing those issues and. Again, um, this will be brought up later, but that's also why city council should vote no to approve tasers tonight and should instead. Use that money to invest in the community. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Elizabeth. We're gonna have Audrey followed by David Sterling.
Hello, my name is Audrey. I'm speaking on behalf of the Iowa City Chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America. Uh, I wanted to speak today because. We were one of those people that sent in late correspondence, so I wanted to bring attention to the letter that we had sent to council. Late last week, so I apologize for sending it late. We were um just working really hard to make sure we could get as much input from our members as possible. Before we sent it off to council. Um, so I just wanted to like kind of give a quick summary, which is basically um we sent a letter that is in support of the Iowa Freedom Riders. And their demands that I, they have made. Um, we were with them from the beginning with the first set of the like sixteen or seventeen demands that council has already. Made some resolutions on and we also wanted to add that uh we really so. Support the um, the more in-depth descriptions that they gave for their demands that they sent to the council later on. We are so glad that they have put so much effort into writing that, writing up those proposals and we think that is really great work that we are doing and we are so happy to see it. So in our letter, we talked about how uh for the Democratic Socialists of America, uh defunding the police is important to our membership as well as working class people. We also suffer, oh, sorry, there's a cell phone. Okay, sorry, um, we also. So suffer from overpolicing and that affects our community in negative ways. And so in the letter, we detailed some of the ways that that happens. Um, we shared a personal anecdote from one of our members who has experienced overpolicing. Um, and then we uh put forth our unequivocal support of the Iowa Freedom Riders and their demands that are making up the city. And so we hope that, you know, being it, we hope that we can show that there is much broader support maybe than some people are aware of. For the IFR demands. And so that is why we sent that letter. We're hoping to bring more urgency um to the council. Well, in order to like uh bring these things into fruition more quickly. And so otherwise I am unable to stay for the rest of the meeting, so I just had two quick real things, two things to say real quick. Uh, one being that um. We would like to encourage the city council to vote no on approving the allocation of over two hundred thousand dollars for new tools of violence, AKA the tasers. And we would also like to encourage the city council to vote no on the new um budget proposal amendment because that includes an increase. To the funding for the police department and doing either of those things totally flies in the face of what city council is saying. Is support for IFRs demands. Um, so that is all I had to say to you all tonight. Uh, thank you so much for letting me speak. Um, if you're interested in reading. The letter that the DSA sent that is down in the uh handouts in the late correspondence area, you can look for our little red logo with the rose if you want to try and seek that out. So. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, Audrey. Um, it is five minutes till eight. Um, so David Sterling, I'm gonna have you come forth. And then uh if the David without a last name, if you've already spoken to council, uh we ask that you uh hold off any comments. And maybe if um time would allow, we might get Catherine, but I'm not certain if David has spoken before. So David Sterling, please um welcome.
Uh, thank you very much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, so uh, uh, I'm gonna apologize if I sound a bit obtuse. I kind of, I, I always find I'm best at contributing a conversation when I use metaphor. To try to illustrate things from a point of view that hasn't been brought up yet. Um, on the topic of uh focusing on the graffiti. I think that a really good metaphor for um the position of oppressed people in this country is uh. And I, I want to preface this by saying that um BIPOC folks are um unduly often. In very uh white supremacist ways uh likened to children. Uh, but in this case, I think it's an appropriate metaphor that essentially. Oppressed people are asking for the opportunity to develop and to uh explore themselves, to simply live and move on with their lives. And the state is effectively performing the role of two abusive parents who neither allow their child to go off on their own. Nor exist in a safe and comfortable household. Now, uh, the city council effectively serves as a DHS worker. Talking to the child about how they're being abused and neglected. And uh, one of the very first things that this DHS worker is saying is. Do you realize that every time you've been mean to your parents, that makes you hard to listen to and hard to believe? And you gotta think about how the child feels in that situation to constantly be questioned on uh the, the relevancy of their issues in the face of what their abuser is facing. And uh to move on to my next point, uh, the abuser in this case is the uh, the class of folks who own the means. And uh have the most political power in town. And if we're really concerned about the livelihood and uh costs to small businesses in this town. It, it just feels like a hypocritical discussion because everybody in town knows that this town is increasingly being owned by a shrinking number of people, the Clarks, Mondanero. Uh, AUR, et cetera. Um, so almost all of the small businesses in town, uh, they're only actually hurting financially because. Wealthy landowners are absorbing all of their money regardless of the impacts of COVID nineteen and the protests. You know, it could cost two hundred dollars to clean off a tag on a wall maybe, but it costs hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of dollars every day just to exist because. These landowners want their dues. So um, any sort of attempts to criticize uh on an economic front to defend small businesses or. Uh, distract from the point of these protests, um, i- i- it's simply hypocritical because if you actually care about these small businesses, then you care about. The power imbalance of the wealthy landowners in this town. Uh, I apologize if it sounds like I'm casting any specific aspersions to city council. Uh, I want to believe in good faith. You know, but uh as someone who's lived in this town my whole life, when I found out a family member was gassed by a police officer. And then I saw the city council meeting where they debated the true meaning of protesters demanding that tear gas be banned and then they decided not to ban it. It was horrifying. It felt like I was that child talking to DHS, being told, no, I, my safety doesn't matter if I'm acting inappropriately. It, it, if someone on, if folks on council are struggling to um relate to it, it might help if they would imagine a state trooper being ordered by the state. To come here and disrupt these meetings because uh it's illegal to care about racial injustice all of a sudden. And for these state troopers to burst in and tear gas uh the city council members currently in their homes. Simply doing what is right and you're being punished where you live for doing so. And those in power are saying that that is normal, that is okay, it's not a priority. Uh, we need immediate bans on tear gas. We need to dismantle the incredibly. High police budget. Um, over sixteen million dollars allocated to policing. We can easily divert that money. It's in the general fund. Uh, if that's my time, then uh, thanks for having me.
Thank you, and I want to thank all of the uh individuals that are waiting um to speak to council. At this time, it is eight PM is eight oh one. And we're gonna bring community comment to a close. Um, but thank you for uh being present and your willingness to um engage in this uh part of government. We are going to move on to item ten A, uh planning and zoning matters, comprehensive plan amendment. North of Camp Cardinal Boulevard and West Camp Cardinal Road. This is a resolution to amend Iowa City's comprehensive plan and change their future land use destination from public, private. Open space to general commercial for the property located north of Camp Cardinal Boulevard and west of Camp Cardinal Road. Can I get a motion to approve?
Amel. Second, Ms.
All right, do we have presentation by our staff?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Good evening. This is Danielle Sisman, NDS. Um, this is an application submitted by MMS Consultants on behalf of the landowner John Harding to amend the comprehensive plan. Future land use map designation from public, private, open space to a general commercial designation for approximately the three point one acres shown here in the dotted white line. Uh, located at the corner of Camp Cardinal Boulevard and Camp Cardinal Road across the street from eighty Gathering Place Lane Development. This is an exhibit showing the current zoning. The subject property, as I said, is currently uh zoned as well, a public designation P one. Surrounded by an interim uh development zone to the north and a low density multifamily zone to the east and a low density single family residential district farther to the east. A little bit of background about the property. Um, Joseph County obtained this property in the eighteen seventies as part of a larger one hundred and sixty acre poor farm tract. Over the time, this parcel has been severed away from that larger area by Highway two eighteen and Camp Cardinal Boulevard. It's a remaining kind of northeast corner of the original poor farm tracks. Jesse County did own and then sell the property to John Harding in twenty fourteen, just after the Iowa, after Iowa City adopted our twenty thirteen comprehensive plan. Um, the future land use map shows the parcel as pu- a public, private, open space due to that public ownership at the time that we developed that plan. There are some additional sensitive features known to be in the vicinity, including steep slopes, wetlands and a stream corridor. Our previous plan map showed the area as public use um based on, like I said, that ownership and the general continued use of the property for agricultural at that time. The Hardings, uh, like I said, did hire a consultant recently to submit three applications to uh the Planning and Zoning Commission, this being the first of them. The series of applications would allow eventually the development of a seven thousand square foot community event center on the site. Um, this particular application, as I said, is the first of those three and it proposes to amend the comprehensive future land use map. To change the designation from that public, private, open space designation to a commercial designation. And the amendment is required for the subsequent application for rezoning to comply with the comprehensive plan. That is one of the criteria that would be evaluated with the rezoning. This exhibit shows the uh subject property highlighted in yellow on the existing future land use map where the little green corner is the public, private, open space designation. And as I said, this would be changing to a general commercial designation. Some additional background, um, this surrounding area has experienced significant development following the construction of Camp Cardinal Boulevard in the mid two thousands. The development in the area includes a variety of housing types and some other non-residential uses like medical office. There have also been several other comp plan amendments uh enacted in the vicinity of this property in two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen. Again, the subject property is highlighted in yellow. Those other comprehensive plan, future land map changes are indicated in these exhibits. The first one uh to the east. Was for residential, I'm sorry, for commercial office development and then another additional one for additional residential development. Staff does use two basic criteria to review a comprehensive plan amendment, including whether circumstances have changed in the vicinity. Requiring a amendment to be, or making an amendment appropriate and whether the proposed amendment would be compatible with other policies or provisions in the city's comprehensive plan. As far as changed circumstances, as I've outlined, there's been some changes, significant changes in ownership, moving from a public. Uh, ownership by the county to a private individual owning the land. And then there's of course been the general development of the neighborhood over time. Um, onsite sensitive features will still need to be accommodated through our sensitive areas ordinance regardless of what its future land use designation would be. So even though it's moving from an open space designation to a commercial designation, the sensitive features are subject to other regulations that would be regulated in that way. And again, general commercial is not a zoning district designation. It's an appropriate future land use category which comprises several different possible uh zoning districts. In this case, we understand the applicant will be filing a rezoning and it was an OPD overlay planned district zoning because of those sensitive features. So that's gonna function more like a site plan and be very specific to the future proposed use in this case. As far as compatibility with other policies or provisions of the comprehensive plan, um, we focused on our review based on land use policies encouraging buffering of residential development for major highways. Development, the corner of Camp Cardinal Boulevard, which is an arterial and Camp Cardinal Road, which is a collector, both more than local streets. Would be having commercial in this area would be an appropriate way to create distance and a buffer of uses between the highway and residential. Also looking at natural resources and preserving natural resources by discouraging sprawl and promoting infill instead. And then continuing to enforce our sensitive areas ordinance. As far as next steps goes, highlighted here in blue is the step that we are at with this property. This is a complex comprehensive plan amendment, like I said, that's required in order for findings to be made. In the positive for any potential rezoning, which would be the next stage. And they have also requested that the city vacate a portion of right away along Camp Cardinal Boulevard as well. After those steps would be completed, coming to you through the Planning and Zoning Commission, then there is a site planning stage and some planning that does need to occur. And then uh those would also be steps that you would see. So based on a review of the relevant criteria, staff recommended approval of the proposed amendment. Staff believes that changing the future land design, use designation. From public, private, open space to general commercial is compatible with the policies and the comprehensive plan, especially those relating to land use and natural resources. At their August sixth meeting, by about a five to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission upheld this recommendation and forwarding it to you tonight with that. Recommendation of approval. The applicant did um perform uh the best they could. A good neighbor meeting um during COVID, we're not encouraging face-to-face meetings, but they have sent out letters. Informing neighbors of what um, what their plans were and we're accepting comments directly from the neighbors uh in response to those letters if there were any. That concludes my staff report and I'm happy to answer questions.
Doesn't sound like any questions for you. Thank you. Um, would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand and I will call upon you. Seeing, oh, uh, John. Welcome.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, John Marner with MMS Consultants, speaking on behalf of the applicant John Harding. Danielle did a nice job of covering all the, some of the issues that we've worked through with staff to this point for the comprehensive plan amendment. A few key points I want to touch on. Uh, we feel some of the development immediately to the east, the multifamily and the church specifically. Will be nice compatible uses with this, the plan use for this applicant. He's actually approached the church and discussed his plans for an event center. At this location and they're excited with that opportunity or with the possibility of having something like that nearby. Danielle mentioned the sensitive areas on the site. The concept that we have in place that she touched on will be presented later on down the road. The concept that we have in place tries to maintain as many of those sensitive features as possible. And be respectful of the sensitive areas ordinance. We've worked with staff quite a bit to this point on some of those concepts. And as she mentioned, we're working through some of the, some revisions that were requested by staff to continue moving that forward. But the, the goal would be to maintain as many of those sensitive features, the wooded areas and some of the slopes and, and wetlands there as possible. The applicant feels there with the projected use or the prospective use that he's proposing here, they're beneficial as well. You know, if it's an event center, having those nice wooded areas and some of those types of things can provide a nice uh enhancement for the site. And the other thing I'd like to talk about briefly, I know there were some concerns at P and Z about the, the traffic. Out onto Camp Cardinal Road and that on a, and out onto Camp Cardinal Boulevard, excuse me. The site wouldn't have direct sack, doesn't have direct access to Camp Cardinal Boulevard, so any traffic impacts would be only related to. Traffic that would exit and enter onto Camp Cardinal Road before it would come out to Camp Cardinal Boulevard. I'm available for any other questions if anybody has any questions.
Here and, uh, thank you. Council, um, anyone else like to address this topic? Council discussion?
This is Pauline.
This is Pauline. I was really excited to see this item on the agenda and this proposal. Camp Cardinal Boulevard has just been developing so quickly and so nicely. It's become a very nice north-south roadway to drive on in between Iowa City and Corleville. And to see this site be put to such good use, to such a unique plan, is very exciting. I do hope, and MMS person mentioned the sensitive area, I do hope that they can develop it, working around without compromising those sensitive areas, the sensitive land areas, and include the buffer along Camp Cardinal Boulevard. So I'm, I'm in favor of this resolution amending the plan to change the land use for this property.
I'm, I'm supportive as well, and, you know, for the reasons that Pauline just mentioned. I'm also a strong advocate and proponent for sociable places, and, you know, having an event center in this part of Iowa City, I think, will be a benefit to the larger community that surrounds the project. And there does seem to be a nice sympathetic relationship between the use and the sensitive areas. Now, we haven't seen what impacts the project will have, but having an event center in a, in a place with unique sensitive features, I think, is, is a, is a good blend. So I'm, I'm interested in this project. I'm looking forward to it. Great. Any other comments?
This area of the, of the city really has nothing of that, of that type. So I agree it would be a positive addition.
All right. Here are no other comments. Roll call, please.
Sully? Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Memes?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 10B, conditional use permit, Herbert Hoover Highway. Letter to the Johnson County Board of Adjustment recommending denial of a conditional use permit for a kennel and daycare facility in the county residential zone at Lot 2 and Lot A of Lovick, first subdivision with fringe area B inside the city's growth boundary of the city-county fringe area. The commission recommended denial, and the applicant's request, deferral to 915-2020. The correspondence was included in our council packet. So could I have a motion to defer until 915-2020?
So moved, Ms.
Second, Sally.
Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Memes?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So move.
Move by. I missed it.
I think it was moved by me, seconded by Janice, or the other way, whichever.
All right, we'll, we'll do move by man, seconded by Weiner. And then. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Memes?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 10C, fringe area rezoning, Sue Avenue Southeast. Letter to Johnson County Planning and Zoning Commission in support of a rezoning from county agriculture to county residential for approximately 1.76 acres of property located at 4477 Sue Avenue Southeast with fringe area B outside the boundary, outside the growth boundary of the city-county fringe area. Could I get a motion to approve?
Move, by Sally.
Second, Taylor.
Staff presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. Danielle Sisman again. And this is a rezoning, as you said, of land located in Fringery B outside the city by Iowa City's growth area. At this time, the family of Ten Rose LLC, the property owner, would like to rezone this parcel for a family member because the property is within Iowa City's two-mile fringe area. The Fringery Agreement specifies the city will make a recommendation to the county Planning and Zoning Commission before they consider the application, they do make their final determination. So the property is shown here outlined in white. It's about a half a mile to a mile outside of the city's current city limits. This is showing the entire parcel, the larger area. And the applicant has also submitted a subdivision application to the county to create essentially these two lots. One lot is the proposed residentially zone lot, while the other remaining 34.6 acre lot will continue to be zone county agricultural A. For the, per our Fringery Agreement, subdivisions of this type do not need to come to the city for review and approval. And this shows the current zoning of the property, which is county residential R. County residential R allows a loss between a half or quarter acre to two acres in size with an overall max density of one unit per acre. And this shows the, again, that it's located in that fringe area B outside the city's growth area. And as I said, this is subject to our Fringery Agreement, which is a component of the city's comprehensive plan and applies to areas outside of the city's jurisdiction. They're not planned for in the city's own comprehensive plan and is within two miles of the city's corporate limit. Staff does rely on this policy in reviewing these types of applications. There are two criteria that we use for reviewing them, compliance with the comp plan and compatibility with the existing neighborhoods. As far as compliance with the county's comprehensive plan, the county land use plan does recommend that this area be, continue to be agricultural. However, residential use already exists on the property, and the proposed zoning that's proposed would not allow for additional residential units because of the density limitations that are in that county zoning district. As far as compliance with the Fringery Agreement, again, it's in Fringery B outside our projected growth area, where agricultural uses are still preferred, but then restrictions to rural agricultural uses are preferred. Again, based on the county zoning district, no additional residential development would be able to happen under this rezoning. So as far as next steps, there's really not too much more for the city council once you make your recommendation tonight. Based on our review of the relevant criteria, staff did recommend approval of the proposed rezoning, although acknowledging that it does not directly align with the policies outlined in the Fringery Agreement, felt that it still meant the intent of that. So the subject area already consisting of residential, and this rezoning not encouraging additional residential use. At this August 20 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's recommendation and voted six to zero and afforded to, to you tonight with that, with the recommendation for approval. And that concludes my staff report. Happy to answer questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions? All right. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand, and I'll call upon you. And if you're on the phone, you can press start nine, and your hand will raise. CNN 01, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yep.
Teague?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Memes?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Forgot me. That's all right.
Oh, no, no, no. Well, I've lost. I've lost my card, so Thomas.
All right, motion passes seven to zero. I thought I was one short there, but I wasn't too sure.
Oh, there they are. Got them.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Item number 11, fiscal year 2021 budget amendment, public hearing. Resolution amended the current budgets of fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. I'm going to open the public hearing.
Mayor and counsel, this is Jeff Bruin, city manager. Before I introduce Jaclyn Kleagle, our budget compliance officer, I just wanted to provide a little context to this item. There's been a little bit of misinformation circulating on what the council is actually taking up tonight. You have already approved the fiscal year 21 budget. You did so on March 24th, and it's customary throughout the year that we amend the budget. We typically do so about three times throughout the year to amend the budget. This initial amendment to the fiscal year budget typically focuses on carryover funds. Those are funds that were budgeted and allocated the previous year that didn't get spent in that year, so we carry those over. Those are often most common with projects. You can think of a park improvement project, a road project that doesn't get completed in one year. Those funds get carried forward to another year. That happens in operational budgets, too. Maybe a department budgeted for a, a purchase of, of a software or some particular item. If they did not get that done in that fiscal year, those funds come over. So that's primarily what we typically focus on with this early budget amendment. However, as you may have seen when looking at this item, what we're really, the vast majority of amendments you're making right here are actually COVID-related. So because of the financial pressures that COVID has caused, we had to go into this budget almost immediately after we adopted it and cut out significant hundreds of thousands of dollars to the budget across a number of departments, actually well north of a million total, but certainly several hundred thousand dollars in many department budgets were, were cut. You're also seeing amendments to amend in any support that we had received, say, from the CARES Act with COVID funding. So you're seeing some, perhaps some increases in revenue related to COVID. You're certainly seeing a lot of decreases in revenue. A lot of the conversation that, that I've heard has focused on what you're approving related to the police department. And I think I just would like to mention, setting those carryforwards aside, again, those projects that they had prior authorization for that didn't get completed, you're actually cutting the police department budget by about $203,000 with this amendment. And again, those are COVID-related cuts. So again, as, as we felt the financial pressures of COVID, we realized that we could not move forward with that adopted budget without cuts to departments. And in this case, again, the police department cuts to the approved operation total just under $203,000. So with that, I, I'm going to back out and allow Jaclyn to, to share a short presentation with you and give you a little bit more context to, to this item tonight.
Okay. One second here. Share my screen. So name is Jaclyn Kleagle, as Jeff mentioned, the finance department. As you mentioned, I'm presenting on the first budget amendment for fiscal year 2021. So just kind of an overview of the whole budget process. The FY 2021 original budget was approved back March 24 of this year, and that covers starting July 1 of 2020 through June 30 of 2021. The city policy dictates allows for amendments in the following situations: emergent situations, transfers from contingency expenditures with offsetting revenues or fund balance, and carryover of prior-year budget authority. City can amend the budget at any time during the year, other than the last 30 days of the fiscal year per state administrative code. The Iowa City averages about three amendments per fiscal year, typically early fall is our first one, which would be this one, the spring of the following year, and then oftentimes early summer of the following year. The next planned amendment coincides with the fiscal year 2022 budget process that would be approved in March of 2021. For this amendment, largely falls into the two categories of carryover of prior-year budget authority and emergent situations. So carryforward requests from the 2020 operating budget submitted by departments and then reviewed by the city manager's office as well as the finance department. Typically, this includes carryforwards over 5,000 or 1% of that division's budget minimum. Also included are capital improvement project budget carryforwards, projects that were previously budgeted for. As the capital improvement project schedule usually aligns more with the calendar year versus our fiscal year cuts off, you know, midsummer. And then emergent situations for this amendment would include COVID-19-related budget cuts as well as grants and the related expenditures that we received, as well as a few small amendments. On the, the revenue side, the major areas that saw the biggest changes, first being intergovernmental revenues. This is about just over 17 million, and this includes state and federal grants on capital improvement project carryforward. So this is projects previously budgeted for that weren't completed, as well as COVID-19 and CARES Act grants in there as well. The next largest change was in transfers, and this saw a decrease of about $2.6 million. This is due to capital improvement project reductions, as well as during the last fiscal year, we had an early payoff of the lease purchase agreement. So we no longer needed those debt service transfers. And then the other large program level that we amended was charges for services, and this is $1.8 million, and that is based off of estimated revenue reductions due to COVID. On the flip side, we have expenditures. The largest increase there is almost 35 million, mostly made up of major capital improvement projects, some of the larger notable ones being the American Legion Road, the McAllister Boulevard Project, and Myrtle Riverside Intersection. Another large program level change is business type and enterprise, one item for 7.4 million. Again, large capital improvement projects, the Scott Trunk Sewer and annual sewer projects being the two larger of those. Additionally, Community and Economic Development Program line saw a $1.8 million increase, primarily due to carryforwards of CDPG and home funds and the university program expenditures, as well as COVID-19 grant expenditures. In conclusion, this is the first amendment for FY 2021. The overall total impact to fund balance is a decrease of about 35 million, and it's covered through excess of fund balances and will not affect property tax levies. I'll take any questions you, you guys may have.
Sounds like no questions. All right. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? And actually, I'm going to open up the public hearing. I'm going to open up the public hearing. And then if you would like to address this topic, we ask that you keep your comments three to five minutes, and I will call you by name if you want to address this topic. Saying no more, I'm going to close the public hearing. Oh, I do see Leanna, before I close the public hearing. Leanna, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Right, so I would just like to make a comment about the budget and the terms of which we can go ahead and restructure the budget allocation for the upcoming year. Earlier during the work session, I believe it was the city manager who said that there was currently no action item to review the budget on policing. And during that same meeting, he had mentioned that, I believe, $2 million were needed to be found for the city in order to reallocate that money into providing free fare for the city. That $2 million, if $203,000 is what we just heard, that number, $203,000 was redirected from ICPD a few months ago for COVID-related was redirected from ICPD a few months ago for COVID-related cuts. I'm giving you, here's another $230,000 that you can reallocate from funding. In the last city council meeting, the proposal was to fund $230,000 to replace 69 tasers from the ICPD. Now you're up to half a million dollars roughly to cover that $2 million for the city to go towards the fare fee. So again, I would like to call into question the good faith of city council into reallocating and working to defund the Iowa City Police Department. This very much is an emergent situation. On June 16th, when you signed the demands, one of those demands was to allocate $1 million towards diversity and the progression to diversity and arts within Iowa City. That was an emergency situation at the time, and defunding the ICPD still very much is one as well. So if those action items are able to be had for COVID-related expenses, if this reallocation was able to be had on earlier this summer, then it absolutely can still be reallocated for emergent situations of which these demands are absolutely one of them. So again, I believe the city manager implied earlier at the start when he was speaking that there's very few situations in which the budget can be changed. I would just like to call into the picture, the credibility of city council in moving forward and putting essentially just doing your jobs into what you promised would have been accomplished a few months ago. So thank you again.
Thank you. We're going to have David followed by Rineen.
Okay, am I still coming through okay?
Yes.
Thank you. I guess I'll just be quick. You know, this this really just is, it's bad faith, you know? The the demands have been clear. And, you know, I'm not going to point the finger at any one person on this. Suppose it's always a group effort and, you know. But, you know, I think this should be delayed. I think that there should be public notice of this delay for citizens to submit requests and ideas. Because it just, it feels so inappropriate. It honestly feels like the perfect fuel for more intense protesting, more intense horrible vandalism, spray paint everywhere. The whole town will be painted in pretty colors, and it's going to be the worst thing ever. Yeah, so not a good idea. That's my vote. That's my voice. Not a good idea. I'm out. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Rineen?
I just wanted to thank you for letting me speak. And I just wanted to second everything that Leanna said. I think it's really important that council takes into account everything that she has brought up for this in this conversation right now. Thank you.
Right. Anyone else like to address the topic? And if you're on the phone, you can press star nine. Saying no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move, ma'am. Second and Burgess.
House of discussion. I guess for me, when, at least for this budget, we we in our work session just finished talking about how we as a council will move forward with some policing efforts that we set forth in our resolution. And so everything that's going to be happening with policing, that is going to be through a coordinated effort. And so I I heard from the from individuals that talked about this budget. This is just something that's already been approved, although there will be some changes to. We're anticipating changes to the police budget. So I am comfortable moving forward with this part of it down the road. If we decide to do something, we have every opportunity to.
I would agree with you, Mayor. I think this is, I do think there is a lot of misunderstanding with this. I will tell you, I mean, having served on council for 10 and a half years, I would say that the budget amendments are the things that are the most difficult to understand in terms of what we do and why we do them and and how they work. I think as the city manager said, you know, some immediate adjustments were made to the 2021 budget as COVID kicked in. It doesn't mean that we can't make additional changes as we go forward if we see a significant need to. But as you said, Mayor, we we are committed to working through those 17 points in that resolution. And, you know, I think we've already, I feel in the timeframe, we've made quite a bit of headway, and we will certainly continue. We've got more discussions tonight. We'll continue to do that. This allows the city to continue to move forward with projects that are carried over from last year. As I said, this is so frequent that we have these kinds of things because of construction season and a lot of our CIP projects. So this really is, in general, is a pretty routine. It does not change our ability to make adjustments related to the Black Lives Matter issue as we move forward.
Thank you for clarifying that, Susan.
Yeah, I just want to just make it clear to the public. So I will ask this that question to Eleanor and Jeff. If we would like to change any amended, right?
As long as you're amending in a way that's consistent with state law, yes, you can.
Any other comments?
Zach, you're it.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Maams?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes, motion passes seven to zero. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
No move, Thomas.
Second, Weiner.
Roll call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Maams?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 12, ground lease 150th East Court. Resolution approving a ground lease with Iowa City Hotel Associates LLC for space to store a solid waste container at 150th East Court Street. I'm going to open the public hearing. And staff presentation, please.
Mayor, I can I can tackle this one. This is a pretty routine item. We lease a portion of our parking deck to the Hilton Garden Inn for storage of their dumpsters. And we need to renew this lease. We're asking you to renew this lease for three years. So this has been an arrangement that we've had since they opened up. Again, they pay us a rent for taking parking spaces in that deck for the storage of their dumpsters.
Great. Anyone have questions for Jeff? Okay. Public discussion. Would anyone like to address this topic? Please raise your hand.
Mayor, this is a public hearing because it's a three-year lease.
Okay, all right. So I think I opened the public hearing already.
Yes, you did.
Yes, so we're in a public discussion, but thank you for the reminder. Saying no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve?
No move, Thomas.
Second.
House of discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Maams?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 13, prohibition on feeding deer. Ordinance amendment title eight, entitled Police Regulations, Chapter Four, entitled Animal Services Prohibit Feeding of Deer. This is the second consideration. Can I get a motion, please?
So move, ma'am.
Second.
Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. And if you're on the phone, you can dial star nine, and your hand will raise, and I'll call you. And Lori Crawford, and we're asking everyone to keep their comments to three to five minutes. Welcome, Lori. You're on mute.
There we go. It's just a question. The portion that talks about an exception that the city can permit feeding of deer as part of a deer management program. I want to make sure that that, because it doesn't say this in the ordinance, I want to make sure that that refers only to sharpshooting and not bow hunting. Can someone answer that?
I can. It would it would allow it for bow hunting. But as you know, that's not part of the rules that are envisioned for the bow hunting.
So the the rules not to feed or bait would override this?
It allows the council to authorize that, but it does not require them to authorize it. And later on in the agenda, the rules for the bow hunting do not allow it.
Okay, I understand that. But my question, I understand that that it doesn't allow feeding or baiting, that the bow hunting rules don't allow that. But my question is, do the bow hunt rules overrule this ordinance?
It's not a question of overruling because this ordinance does not require the council to provide the exception. So yes, the bow hunting rules will apply.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Will anyone else like to address this topic? Hearing none. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Maams?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 14, deer management, bow hunting, ordinance amendment amending title eight, entitled Police Regulations, Chapter Seven, entitled Weapons, to allow persons to discharge an arrow as part of an approved deer management plan. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So move.
Move by man, seconded by Thomas. Public discussion. Please raise your hand if you would like to address this topic. Florence, welcome. Please keep your comments three to five minutes. You're on mute, Florence. We can't hear you. There you go. Hello, Florence. Florence, we still can't hear you. We're going to go to Lori, and then we'll swing back to Florence. Welcome, Lori.
Hi, Mayor Teague. Do you hear me?
Hello, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening. You know, I'm listening to the Iowa Freedom Riders, the BLM. And Iowa City Dear Friends has been going through what they're presently going through. We've been going through the BS for two years. As Mohammed said, the council repeatedly communicating, oh, we hear you, we hear you, yet not acting on it. As David said, worrying about the property. My God, hostas are being nibbled on. Let's kill deer. Let's take lives. And there's always a progression from how people see animals and wildlife and then how they treat people, how they treat each other, the lack of compassion, the lack of understanding. And as you know, a petition complaining about deer browsing in Buffalowood or Buffwood neighborhood initially triggered the whole, let's kill the Iowa City deer. And I received word today from city staff that there have been approximately six to 12 deer browse complaints this year. Six to 12 complaints. Tell me this justifies a city partnering with a local business, Finn and Fur. That owner is on, has been on the deer committee. Tell me that's not a conflict of interest. Now he's the one that's going to profit from selling hunt equipment and training and certifying predominantly white male hunters to mask up and stalk our community in the midst of BLM and IFR negotiations? Are you serious? Iowa City is already at the top of the of world news for COVID. Surely, we don't need to escalate an already tense community situation for the sake of protecting a few wealthy residents' hostas. And according to Resolution 19 dash 216 to 1, the duration of the hunt shall be a minimum of 30 days. There has been no clear or decisive public communication at all concerning a change in the length of time that the hunt will cover. Multiple council members at the previous meeting asked for clarification and boldly stated that they supported keeping the hunt to 30 days while the city manager stammers about some previous deal that he cut with the NRC for a longer hunt. That hardly adheres to Iowa Code 380 point B, point A, point B, which mandates if a proposed code of ordinances contains a new ordinance or an amendment to existing ordinances, the council shall hold a public hearing on the proposed court before adoption. You you haven't given us time at all. Just like IFR is saying, everything's great behind closed doors. And then you go public, and it's like nobody ever discussed anything. And you're just moving on your own trajectory. As Martin Luther King Jr. said, "There comes a time when one must take a position that is neither safe nor politic nor popular, but he must take it because conscience tells him it is right." I ask that you respect the citizens of your community, of whom you represent, and vote against the proposed extended four-month hunt. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. We're going to have Florence try again, followed by Allison. And Florence, we don't, there you are. Will you try speaking? We're going to go to Allison. We're we're having issues with Florence. I'm not sure why. Welcome, Allison.
Hi, Mayor Teague.
Hello.
I'm going to talk against the proposed hunt here. We are currently in the midst of spiking coronavirus outbreaks. We're dealing with the Black Lives Matter movement and essentially our collective reckoning with the racist roots of our society. And I would say that this is not the time to invite masked and armed hunters into our community. There was a 2011 survey that was conducted by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service that found that 94% It found that ninety-four percent of deer hunters are white and eighty-eight percent are male. So my question is, is this really the time for Iowa City to be paying to manage yet another activity that is heavily dominated by white males? Additionally, there was a poll done by the National Wildlife Federation, and they found that fifty percent consider themselves conservative compared to thirty-seven percent moderate and ten percent liberal. And it's not really surprising that these ranks skew conservative. But it is surprising that the city is about to make the decision to attract people into our city from outside that will be absolutely carrying a weapon and statistically likely to be conservative. This is a very tense political situation, political climate right now. I think that's both very disrespectful to what we're dealing with as a city and then also just asking for trouble. I was involved with looking at some of the rules and regulations for the, for the hunt and felt that they were cherry picked to be less restrictive than comparable towns such as Ames and Cedar Rapids. This is pretty much guaranteeing that we'll see an influx of out-of-town hunters that want to bag an easy buck. And so again, these aren't going to be people just in their own backyards, but out-of-town hunters that will be going around the community and trying to convince people to let them hunt on their land. And who knows what will happen as a result of any of those activities. I just want to go back to the words that Tony Di Nicola had, had said out loud at one of the public forums before last winter's sharpshooting program. He said, "I've been doing this for thirty years and nothing has changed." And what he means by that is that deer typically increase their birth rate following a kill or a hunt. They sometimes triple it to replace those that have been lost. So the bow hunt will not substantially decrease the number of deer in the city. It will not keep the population at a low number. And it will only bring strife and the potential for serious problems into our community. I'd like to ask you to, to vote against the resolution to conduct the hunt this year and reconsider a better way to go about this by postponing or canceling it and appealing to the DNR. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. We're gonna try Florence one more time. Florence, can you unmute yourself? And, and maybe try to speak now? We're not getting, we're not getting Florence. Yep. We're not getting Florence. Okay, we're gonna have Lori Crawford, followed by David. And we're asking everybody to keep their comments three to five minutes, please.
The rules are number fifteen, right? Right now, we're, we're not talking about rules yet. Is that correct?
That is correct, if you want to wait till, although people are kind of mixing them up a little bit, but if you want to wait till then, you sort.
No, I don't. No, I'm gonna do both. I'm concerned why all of a sudden we're having a hundred-day bow hunt being proposed when thirty was the number discussed in two thousand nineteen and also the number in the Resolution nineteen dash two sixteen. It seemed to me that some of the council members were surprised also that this was much longer than the thirty-day hunt that's being proposed. I have a question, which is who authorized a hundred days? I would have assumed that that would be a council decision. I think it might be better for reasons that others have stated to forego the hunt this year based on what's going on with COVID. I mean, you know, we're number one in COVID and this probably isn't a good time to add additional stress to our community. I think we have better uses of police resources right now. This whole bow hunt and, and sharpshooting occurred because we've had six to twelve complaints a year about browse. And we killed five hundred deer last winter with the sharpshooting. So I don't understand why six to twelve complaints a year justifies all. I understand this is the agreement you made with the Natural Resources Commission, but I ask if it's possible to have that reconsidered, to attempt that, and if not, to not have the bow hunt this year, and if you do, to limit it to thirty days. Thank you. Oh, oh, I have one more quick thing. So another problem with the bow hunt is the type of people that come in. I mean, you've got obviously good people and bad people in any group, but I sent an email to all of you that I received yesterday from a man, which, and I'm assuming that you got it, which called me Karen and then asked me if I'd like to hold the legs while he gutted the deer. And I find that to be threatening and intimidating and makes me feel unsafe. And I had a number of those types of incidents in Cedar Rapids, including one hunter turning on the gas in my yard. And I, I really don't want to go through that personally again either. So thank you.
Thank you, Lori. We're gonna try Florence and see if we can't get her on the line. And then after Florence, we're gonna have David. All right. And Florence, if you can unmute. We still can't hear you, Florence. If you can unmute your phone somehow or your device. Florence, I'm sorry, but I, we won't be able to hear from you today. We certainly did try. We're gonna have the last hand that I see raised is David come up at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Well, you know, one of the nice things about getting more specifically involved with y'all is getting to hear about the other things going on in the city. So thanks to the Iowa City Deer Friends for, you know, keeping us all engaged in, in the loop about what's going on. And
My David, you're on mute.
Oops, sorry. Say better.
We heard you until.
Okay.
Yep.
Cool, thanks. Yeah, that, you know, listened to them the last few weeks, you know, that this seems like a, a no-brainer for us. Especially what Allison and Lori were just saying. Excuse me.
You know, you're getting yourself back together, David, so we'll, we'll wait.
Very sorry about that. Just had something go down the wrong pipe. But I'm listening to the talk last few weeks, it seems like a, kind of like a no-brainer, you know, Allison and, and Lori talking about the types of people coming in and, you know, with everything that's going on with IFR and Black Lives Matter, it seems like, um, it seems like this is not the subsection of the population that we want coming in armed and, and, you know, coming into town with the idea that they're here to, to kill things. Especially with some of the talk that we had earlier about people valuing property over people. And you know, this is just, it seems like a pretty easy one. So I just wanted to put my two cents in there. And then thanks to the ICDR friends for bringing this up for all of us. Thanks.
Thank you, David. We're gonna have Rosa, followed, once again, we're gonna try Florence. Hello, Rosa. We, if you can unmute, there you go.
Okay. Yeah, so I have a couple of questions. And this is partially perhaps questions about the law, the Iowa laws. When people do bow hunting, it sounds like it's not uncommon for a hunter to shoot a deer and for that in one location and for that deer to go to another location. So my question is, if a hunter gets permission from property A, owner of property A, and shoots a deer with bow and arrow on that property A without killing it, and that deer goes to property B, is it lawful for an armed hunter to enter property B to kill it? That's my first question. My second question is, if a deer dies on your property and you find a dead deer on your property, does the hunter need permission to enter your property to receive it? To retrieve it, I'm sorry. Another question I have, the third question I have, is if a person is injured as a result of a bow hunt, either by a hunter or by an injured deer trying to flee, who is liable? The city or the hunter? These are some questions that I'm, that are on my mind. And I, maybe some context, people have been bringing up COVID. But I haven't yet heard anybody talk about how COVID has kept people at home, both adults and children who are maybe learning from home remotely and needing to go outside on breaks. And I just kind of want to have people imagine how at-home workers and children could encounter hunters and deer on their property. Those are my questions. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Rosa. If, Kelly, will you connect with Rosa and maybe get a, a phone number or email, please? And then maybe we can have Eleanor reach back out to her.
Sure. Mayor, I can just answer the, the question about entering another person's property to retrieve the deer. There's a specific exception to the trespass law that allows it.
Okay, so that allows, sorry, just, just to clarify, that allows an armed hunter to enter the property, or does the hunter need to be unarmed to enter the property? This is my question.
I have to look at the specific code section. I'm, I can't answer that right now. But it, but if Kelly gets your information, I certainly can and, and answer it for you.
I, I think that's an important question. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Rosa.
I can pull her email up, registration.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right, great. Florence? Welcome. And if you can unmute. Try to unmute one more time. All right. Sorry about that, Florence.
I did email Florence and give her the call-in information, just if she's listening and wants to check her email.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, we are, thanks for everybody chiming in there. We are going to move on. We're still at this one. Okay, so council discussion.
Mayor, I'd just like to clarify, I mean, we're, this, this, we're just voting on whether to include that language in that article. And I, I just wanted to kind of clarify, if we don't include this additional language in the article regarding weapons, how would that affect the arrangement with Iowa Natural Resources on the bow hunting of deer? I mean, it would seem to me then that bow hunting is not allowed in the city if it's not in this article. Would that be correct?
An amendment to the ordinance is required in order to proceed with your deer management plan.
Thank you.
I just want to ask you, if we did not do that amendment, what's going to happen? Can we? Because I really also don't understand that this area and the hundred days, if somebody can tell me about that.
I would suggest that we finish this item and then move on to the next one. I believe that Jeff has a presentation with respect to the bow hunting rules that might inform that discussion. If you want to wait and vote on this ordinance until after you deal with the, the rules, you can certainly do that.
Because those both are related to each other, you know, I really would like to know in order, because it kind of, it doesn't make sense to approve this and deny the other, you know?
So I'm assuming we need a, a motion to defer until after item fifteen discussion.
I don't think you need a motion to defer. You can just take up the other item and vote on it and then take this one.
All right, all right. So we're gonna move on to, well, let me see if council, what are council thoughts? Do we want to move on to the next? Now, I'm, I'm comfortable moving on.
I don't care which order we do.
Okay.
But I really don't understand, like, you mean, if we approve the rules and now we can still deny that you're managing bow hunting?
I, I think I can go back up to the top. Dear ma, I can go back up to the top of this one, or number fourteen. And then after we talk about number fifteen, we're, we're still gonna have to get a public comment on number fifteen and then council discussion.
Sure.
All right. So we're gonna move on to item number fifteen, Bow Hunt Rules and Regulation, Resolution approving the rules and requirements of the bow hunt program. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move, ma'ams?
Second comment.
Okay, and then we're gonna have a staff presentation.
Mayor and council, again, Jeff Ruin, city manager. I want to back up and provide some more context to how we got here tonight. Throughout the two thousands, the city had an active deer management program where we utilized sharpshooting on an annual basis to control the deer population. In the late two thousands, the city decided to stop with the sharpshooting program and did not have an active deer management program. Beginning in around two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, the city council certainly saw a significant uptick in concerns from residents about the growing deer population. We then had a deer count brought in that showed that our deer population had indeed ballooned back up to pre-two thousand levels when that sharpshooting was first deemed necessary. The last year count we had, I believe, noted that we had about eighty-five deer per square mile in some parts of our community. So in two thousand nineteen, after more than a year of back and forth with the state, the city council, again, just last year in August unanimously passed a resolution for our deer management program. Council has never been, and I think it's safe to say, is not excited about having a a urban bow hunt program, but felt it was necessary in order to get the approval that we needed from the state of Iowa to conduct the sharpshooting that we did last year. So essentially, what happened was that we went to the state, we said we'd like to resume our sharpshooting to, just like we did in two thousand, in the two thousands, the state said, no, you can't do that. You must bow hunt. We went back to them and negotiated essentially a one-year sharpshooting and then a commitment for four years of bow hunting. And we're now discussing year one of that bow hunting. So again, just to make it clear, the past council was not excited about this. And, but, but it was necessary in order to move forward with the deer management program. This past winter, we did a contract on sharpshooting. And as was mentioned before, there were five hundred deer culled in Iowa City over the winter months. That ended in mid-March. And at that time, we began working on the urban bow hunt program that we committed to through the state of Iowa. We applied for the deer management zone in May. That was a staff application that I authorized to apply. And we had to make a number, we made a number of decisions on that application. And I'll, I'll mention a few of those. The first and really the decision that guided everything else was whether we were going to allow hunting on public property or private property or, or all, or, or both. And council may recall, when we did sharpshooting throughout the winter, the vast majority of concerns you heard from the community was the sharpshooting taking place in public parks and at our cemetery. And we heard loud and clear from the community that they did not like the idea of that hunting taking place in public parks. So the decision I made as staff was to focus only on private property. In doing so, I felt obligated due to the commitment that we made to, to create a, a program, a framework for a program that would allow us to have to create a program, a framework for a program that would allow us to have a hunt that met the minimum expectations of the Natural Resource Commission, which is the state agency that oversees this. We did extend, or we applied for the hunts throughout the entire state bow hunting season. Given the strong parameters or the restrictions, I should say, we felt that 30 days was not going to be sufficient and the state wouldn't see that sufficient as being sufficient because we knew that we were taking public grounds off the table and that we were going to be fairly restrictive when it comes to private properties. And we'll get into the restrictions that we have on private properties. The state was very concerned that we were just going to go through the motions. And we committed that we would not just go through the motions, that we would give four years of bow hunting a legitimate shot to help us with our deer management program. Whether we like it or not, that's the commitment that we made. They have a maximum of 75 deer tags, and that's the other commitment that was made in May. So we worked from that point in May to review programs in other communities. And we reviewed a number of those programs and we tailored our program to what we felt was best. But it's important to know that every community is different. And certain communities allow hunting in public grounds. And if you allow hunting on public grounds, you can probably be much more restrictive on where it can take place in private grounds. And it kind of works both ways. So you have to, you have to really look comprehensively at the program you're trying to put together. The rules and regulations that we have in place are attached to the agenda item. I can go over any number of those in detail, and Eleanor is here to support me with that. I do want to let you know that we had received inputs last week from the Iowa City Deer Friends. And we appreciated very much the input that they provided. And there's a number of provisions and the rules that you're seeing tonight that came directly from the Deer Friends. I'm by no means trying to represent that we met all of their, that we took all of their suggestions. But there are a number of them that did come from our conversations with the Deer Friends. And again, want to thank them for continuing to be engaged in those discussions. I want to go through probably the most important ones. And I'm going to share my screen because the distance regulations and the permissions from properties are really the most important. And what our rules say was that no shots can be taken within 150 feet of any home, building, or property line unless that property owner grants permission. Okay, so if within 150 feet, someone wants to hunt around your house, they have to have your permission to be able to do so. There also has to be no shots taken within 150 feet of a trail, road, sidewalk, park, school ground, or right-of-way. And there is no exception or waiver to that particular rule. So what I thought would be helpful is we just randomly picked a few neighborhoods in town. And I want to show you how that 150 feet would apply. Because what you're going to see is that your average residential neighborhood is not going to see any bow hunting. Because we also have a provision in our rules that if you need more than three waivers, that that property is automatically excluded, okay? So again, if you want to hunt in your backyard and you need four people to give you a waiver, it doesn't matter even if your four neighbors are willing to do that. If you need four, the property is off limits. The max of waivers you can get is three. So I'm going to share my screen for a minute and just walk you through a couple of neighborhoods. And hopefully you'll get a sense of how restricted that 150 feet provision will be. Okay, so again, what we're looking at here is the 150-foot, that's the green circle that you see there. That represents a radius of 150 feet. In this first example, which just happens to be in the north side of town along Kimball Road, there are four buildings or property lines that are within that 150 feet. This property is not eligible to be hunted on. Okay, this is moving to more on an east side location near Friendship Street. You can see this particular location, if you wanted to hunt here, there's actually nine buildings or property owners, or property lines, excuse me, that would require permission. Again, our rules say if you need more than three, if you need four, it's automatically ineligible. This whole neighborhood, you can look around, automatically ineligible, and this is a pretty typical subdivision in Iowa City. Going down to an area in South Iowa City, again, you can see that in this particular neighborhood, you would need 12 waivers to hunt on this property. It's automatically ineligible, again, after you need four. So nowhere even near being able to hunt in this particular area. This is on the west side, you've got some larger lots in this particular subdivision. And this one still needs 10 properties, 10 waivers. And again, that's not eligible under our, under our rules for this program. I think you get the theme here, this is more of a central older neighborhood down by Summit. And in this particular case, there would be eight waivers needed. So the point I'm trying to make with this is that these rules are going to eliminate the vast, vast majority of residential neighborhoods in the community. We still feel that there will be properties that are able to be hunted. And we still feel that we will meet our obligation to the state to allow hunting in our community. But I very clearly want to make that point that in your established neighborhoods, the opportunities for hunting are going to be few and far between. And even if you have that opportunity, there's probably going to be a waiver that you need from somebody at some property line. And again, this does not even account for any conflicts that there may be with public property like sidewalks, trails, parks, and things like that. So I hope this helps illustrate the restrictiveness of what we're proposing here today and show you that it will be limited. You're not going to have widespread hunters roaming your average residential neighborhoods. But there will be those larger properties that are able to be hunted, and we think that could be hunted safely and in accordance with our agreement that we had with the state. I'm happy to get into any of the details on the other rules and regulations that are in there. But I thought the time would be best focused on the distance provisions because I think those are most impactful for your decision tonight.
My question, Jeff, will be, can I ask a question, Mayor, or it's not time for a question?
Oh, you can ask the staff a question if I unmute myself.
Okay. Yeah, Jeff, I just want to ask you, what happened if we postpone this for now? Is that going to interfere with our commitment with the state?
I'll give a short answer, and Eleanor, please jump in if you need to elaborate. But we made the commitment for four years. If we don't follow through on that commitment, inevitably, we will find ourselves in the same position we were in a couple of years ago with a deer population that the council deemed to be too high because you were getting certainly a lot more than six to 12 complaints per year. You were getting flooded, the council was getting flooded with complaints at that time. So I'm afraid if we don't follow through on this, we're going to find ourselves with a population that we're unable to manage because the state is not, they've been very clear, they will not allow us to sharpshoot again. Sharpshooting is off the table, and I don't see that coming back. So we're going to have a lot of trouble managing that deer population.
But are we on the beginning of the first year?
Yes, it's the first year.
But first year started when? Now?
Yes, our start date is October 1st.
Okay, then I guess can we postpone it until like next year? Is still we're going to be on the, within the first year? Of course, that's just question, we don't know what the council think, but.
In our deer management zone application that was approved by the state, we had the dates of October 1st to January 10th. And January 10th is the end of the hunting season. And so there is no hunting permitted in Iowa after January 10th.
So my question, Jeff, in alignment with what Mazza here has asked is, if, and I was on the council when all, when, when all this was discussed, although I followed some of it. And I gather there's been extensive, extensive letter writing with, correspondence with DNR. My question is, given all that the public, the public speakers have said and everything else that's going on in this community, if we wrote to DNR and asked to simply move this back to do a four-year program that would start a year from now, is there a possibility that that would be approved? Because there's, there's so much going on in this community. And it just, even if it's restricted, it seems to me it's really the last thing we need right now.
Eleanor, I don't know if you have any thoughts on the, on the possible action the state could take if we don't follow through?
Well, we'd have to seek an amendment to the plan that they've approved. I don't know that we have time, time to do that. And I mean, I think, I think what Jeff said earlier is, is accurate. If you made a commitment to the state, you made a political decision at that time that was more in part, or the council did at that time, that it was more important to get the sharpshooting done, given the community sentiment at that time, or a portion of the community sentiment at that time. And you committed to, to bow hunting in the subsequent years, absent a change in the Natural Resources Commission, which likely, I assume, requires a change in the party that controls state government. I think you can assume that you will not get authority to, from that commission to sharpshoot or at any point in the future. So I think what Jeff said is accurate, you're going to have a situation where we've got 85 deer per mile and you can't do anything without the permission of the state.
I just think that, you know, I understand what you're saying, Eleanor and Jeff. We committed to this and, you know, we did the like stop shooting and now we're supposed to start this. And I guess I was there when we did both. But really, just given everything happening right now, as you know, the thing that's really struck me by the public comment is when Rosa said, and she just reminded me that children are staying home right now from the school. And you know, on the day they're going to go out. And if they just like interact with those people by, if they don't see them or they went close by them, I just really scared that something was going to happen. That's why I think this, yes, we understand that we made the commitment. We understand that we're going to move forward with this. But giving everything happening right now, I guess we can write amendment to this and just requesting that they, they just give us some time. That might, to essentially.
I have a question regarding, I mean, my recollection is Iowa City is the only city in the state of Iowa that has thus far not permitted bow hunting. This will be our first year with a bow hunt. So I'm assuming that Corralville, Cedar Rapids, all the cities and towns that we know that are nearby and throughout Iowa are proceeding with bow hunts during this hunting season. Is that not correct?
I am not aware of any community that routinely bow hunts that's not doing it this year. Not all cities bow hunt. We were the only one that did sharpshooting. But if a city doesn't have a deer population problem, then they're not actively seeking those deer management zones. So again, I'm not aware of anybody that's taken a year off deer to COVID or any other reason.
Do we know if Cedar Rapids has a bow hunt?
Yes, Cedar Rapids bow hunts annually as does Corralville.
While we've got a break here, I've got the answer to the question about whether the pursuit of the deer that has been killed and has gone into neighboring property can be done armed or unarmed. It can only be done unarmed. That's section 716.7 of the Iowa code.
Okay. I do think we should probably have some community comment. Because the public does have an opportunity to speak. So we're going to go ahead with community comments. And I think that we do have, and I'm blanking on the name, of who was trying to get it, Florence. I think Florence is on the phone. Thank you, Florence, for waiting so patiently. And we're going to hear from Florence now. And if you can unmute Florence, we'll be able to hear you.
Can you, can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you very much for your efforts on my behalf. This is my third device. Okay, first, just for the first 20 seconds of my remarks, I want to comment on, on what was brought up earlier by all the people from the Freedom Riders. As a concerned citizen, I'd like to say, I was so delighted to read in the DI that you are going to move a third of the police resources to community social issues. And I urge you by whatever modalities you can to make good on this, to put your money where your mouth is and to go ahead and arrange to defund those sections of the police dealing with, with weapons and to move it towards social services. And then I'd like to say, the Bill of Rights does provide for peaceful protest. So there is no excuse for attacking and arresting people who have been nonviolent. Okay, then, if you can still hear me, I'd like to speak in support of prudent, well-considered regulations regarding the bow hunt, if you go forward with it. Without these regulations, I can't see that you can fulfill your, the community expectations that this be safe and rational. As you may have noticed, there are several letters objecting to the lax restrictions in your pile of letters. So it's not the more active people who are speaking to you alone, but many people in the community who feel there should be good rules. We can't understand why, when the DNR only requires 30 days, why you can continue to hunt for more than three months. Makes no sense. Even if you must start, you should start in a, in a controlled, careful way. Then the next objection is that the shooting test basically doesn't exist. The person who takes the test at Finn and Sather can repeat it any number of times. The test itself is so easy that anyone could pass it, it just requires shooting a gun. A drunk alcoholic or someone on drugs could pass it. There's no indication of skill or the likelihood of actually hitting a target. Whoever made that rule didn't want a rule. And I would urge you to firm up the requirement so that the person actually be likely to hit the target. Next, who is responsible for the unclaimed deer? I have a vision that in one day, there could be several bow hunters crossing the same land. Just as you need with guns and bullets to have a record of which gun produced which bullet. So it seems to me there should be markings on each arrow to indicate the owner or the bow of origin. Otherwise, there'll be deer there with no unclaiming responsibility as the deer dies and of course lands on someone's land. And then finally, I'd like to bring up the issue of tree stands. These should be temporary, not, not nailed to the tree permanently. First of all, it's bad for the tree. And secondly, if you permit permanent tree stands, people will poach. So I'd like to urge you then to end these ill-advised rules. Even if you have the hunt, you can make a much better set of rules, which will be. Even if you have the hunt, you can make a much better set of rules, which will be more acceptable and will permit will prevent really gross infractions. So I urge you to do all in your power to make the bow hunt safe and more acceptable to the public and more more responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to have Allison followed by Mick Alister.
Thank you. I wanted to push back on a couple of things that the city manager has said and presented. It was true that the Iowa City Dear Friends had input into the the draft rules and regulations. However, we didn't get to see a copy like the has been done with the Truth and Reconciliation Commission Committee or Commission. And so we didn't actually get to see on paper what those rules and regulations were really going to look like until they were presented to council. And there are several things in there which we're not happy with. If you remember those maps that Jeff was showing on the screen, such as, you know, Kimball Road, there were a couple other examples. The specific houses he centered on, it's true, would not meet the requirements for a hunt. But just off to the edge, if you noticed in some of those maps, there are properties which absolutely would meet the requirements for the hunt. And they're neighboring the dense houses where the deer would then run after being shot and be followed by hunters. So, you know, it's not true that most neighborhoods won't see hunting. I mean, even down in the downtown, you know, Longfellow neighborhood area, the Ralston Creek property that borders Jefferson Street is is plenty big enough to meet those requirements. And it it is in the middle of a very densely populated neighborhoods where the deer will flee once they're shot. There's some other language in there that, you know, we didn't really approve of. We're looking for properties that are five acres or greater, for example. And so I think the rules and regulations here are just not up to spec. I think that, you know, if if we really wanted to get those to be in a place where we feel comfortable, it's just not there yet. And I don't know if the council members have had a time have had a chance to look through those rules and regulations. But they're just not very stringent. And again, I want to make the point that this will attract people from out of town who are looking for areas where there's lenient rules and lenient restrictions. So they can, you know, shoot deer in more places, they can get more deer, they can get those buck tags. It's about trophy hunting. So if we're looking to attract all those people that are denied in other areas or that other areas find they find harder to shoot in, then that's exactly what we're doing. I don't see why we need to do that. And I see that's actually disservice to to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. We're going to have Mick Alister followed by former Mayor Bailey.
This is Brian McAllister. Can you hear me?
Yes, thanks for stating your first name.
So I'm going to actually speak in favor that the that the city's finally come up with a plan to manage deer with the bow hunt. I appreciate that the city's going through with their commitment to the DNR and and has this plan. I would actually say that that the rules as written are fairly restrictive and probably maybe too restrictive. I lived in the north side of Iowa City for eighteen years. I live on a ravine. And I'm not certain that my property or any of the properties on this ravine would actually qualify. Last winter, I saw two deer dead in our ravine that rotted throughout the winter. One the previous year. Constantly there are deer in my backyard, and I don't think that we can actually hunt in this ravine. And so I would actually say that the regulations are very restrictive. And I would actually like to see sort of more use of the open areas throughout Iowa City in order to control the deer population.
Thank you. We're going to continue with former mayor of Iowa City Mayor Bailey, followed by Kelser Kelsey Teeter. And I also want to remind people that we're asking for the comments to remain around three to five minutes. And if we can even keep them a little shorter, there will be because there's more people that want to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Absolutely. Welcome.
Great. Welcome. Thanks for letting me speak. I first want to say it's a little disappointing that we approach these guidelines by upfront volunteering to have a hundred day hunt. Given our city's reluctance to do bow hunting within the city limits, I think it would have been more appropriate to approach DNR with a proposed thirty day hunt. That being said, it seems like things are going to move ahead. I do think regardless of the previous speaker's remarks, that the restrictions should be stricter. I understood what the city manager said that these these rules would probably rule out many properties in Iowa City. But I think a minimum property size would have been a clearer way to do this. I'm curious to know from the city manager in what neighborhoods he anticipates that hunting would occur. I think that that's really important for all of us to know. I've spoken with my neighbors. They have huge concerns, given that we've all, you know, we've all experienced a lot this year. They have huge concerns about bow hunting at all in the city during the winter. They have kids, kids out walking. This whole idea of deer being shot and running to other properties is is horribly concerning, especially if you weren't somebody who wanted to have a deer hunt, a bow deer hunt in your area. And there you have a wounded deer on your property potentially. So I would suggest that if somebody does have permission to hunt in a particular neighborhood, that notice is given to the entire neighborhood that hunting would would be occurring there. Additionally, I think that there needs to be more transparency in the city, that there's public notice. I don't want to end up walking or driving through an area where a deer slaughter is taking place. So I think it's a good idea for signs or notice bow hunting may occur in this area. So people are warned they can they can avoid the area. I don't want to see a dead deer being loaded up into a truck. It's been a stressful year. I I think that that would be quite disturbing and unsettling. So I think that we need to be respectful of those of us, many of us in the city who's who have never wanted to see a bow hunt in the city limits. I think we need to do more to have more transparency and greater understanding about where this will occur. Property owners need to also understand their rights, as Eleanor pointed out, that if if a hunter needs to retrieve a deer that's ended up on your property, what the rules are. I don't want to have to confront somebody telling them to drop a weapon. I think that people need to be well informed about what the rules are. So people's property and not only property, but their sensibilities about the appropriateness of this hunt are respected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Kelsey Teeter followed by Lori Kendrick.
Hi, Mayor Teagan, member of City Council. I wanted to, thank you. I wanted to start by saying that I appreciate all of the efforts. It sounds like the city manager and the city as a whole has been taking to try and manage the competing interests of not just the DNR, but various parties throughout our community. This is very clearly an issue that is very near and dear to many Iowa City residents' hearts, mine included. I am one of the people that had spoke out and expressed some significant concerns about the sharpshooting efforts that were going to occur near my home last year. After correspondence with with members of the council and the company that was hired to do that, I did feel much more reassured and and did not have a negative experience throughout the time that they were hunting in my area. My my concern and frustration has been around the bow hunting that I had been under the impression would occur in the city's parks. We did have a wounded deer come onto our property last year during the during the hunt. But we don't, we don't believe it was as a result of the sharpshooters. And so that had led to some concerns that I've had about the bow hunting. I also want to express appreciation for the DNR's effort, who came out and picked up the deer and took care of all of the issues related to that and, you know, were able to track and monitor and, you know, try to figure out what had happened. They were they were confident it was a bow hunter, not the sharpshooters. So so I appreciate their support and their availability to help in that situation. And I would imagine they would be able to continue doing that in in the future. I really appreciate hearing all of the new restrictions and understand the need for extending the time based on the limitations that the city is looking at having in place, like the hundred and fifty foot guideline. I think that is really helpful and is going to impact the effectiveness of the program. Therefore, justifying the need to expand it, extend it, excuse me. I do want to echo what the speaker before me had mentioned in saying that she was unclear about the hundred and fifty foot guideline. I did like what she said about maybe looking at a size of a property or something along those lines. Because it does just get kind of gray. Should the shooter be standing a hundred and fifty feet from another property? Does the edge of the property the shooter's on need to be a hundred and fifty feet from another property? I it just got kind of confusing to me. So I am in support of moving forward with this. But I think some of the clarification around what that distance restriction is would be really helpful. So thank you all for your help with this.
Thank you, Kelsey. We're going to go to Lori Kendrick followed by Lori Crawford.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have an issue with when we made the commitment. You were at the NRC meeting. Counselor Memes was present. Jeff Fruin was present. Their focus was on promoting recreational hunting in the Iowa City community due to the lack of public space for bow hunters in the state of Iowa. There was absolutely no interference at that point. There was no Black Lives Matter, no Freedom Riders, no COVID. Are you seriously thinking or believing that the NRC and their push for recreational to expand recreational bow hunting in the state of Iowa will trump the issues of Black Lives Matter and COVID in our community right now? I can't I can't fathom that. And I really want you and and our counselors to consider the seriousness of what they're thinking, if they're thinking that, that recreational hunting is more important than these other issues in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and we're going to go to Lori Crawford.
Thank you. Mayor and counselors, first I want to address a couple of things and then I'll get into talking about the rules. Sharpshooting was nineteen ninety six, ninety seven to two thousand and ten. I'm curious why why we need deer, excuse me, deer management exclusion and the feeding ordinance if sharpshooting is off the table. Seems to me that that language should not be in the feeding ordinance. Three regarding what Counselor Thomas said, there is a difference between Iowa City and other cities this year. And it's because I this is Iowa City's first year with the bow hunt. So in spite of COVID, we also have that. It's the first year. We don't know what to expect. Fourth, the map that Jeff showed, I don't believe those are high deer density areas. And I didn't see any woods on those maps. And fifth, regarding what Eleanor said, actually, bow hunters do come on your property if the deer isn't dead and they bring a knife and they slit the throat. So they do have to bring a weapon on to finish the deer off. Even if the ordinance says that differently, that's what they do. An important part of the application process is the proficiency test. This test determines who will be hunting. The proposed test is Coralville's and far too easy, requiring eighty percent accuracy from twenty yards is pretty standard. Not standard and far more lax than other cities are one, using a nine inch target and two unlimited attempts to pass. A nine inch target is too large, I'm sorry. Deer vital area, their heart, lungs and liver is only six to seven inches. Why didn't the city use Urban Dale's proficiency test? Urban Dale and others use a three D life sized deer target and allow only two attempts per year. Finn and Feather suggests at a minimum a vital area target and limiting applicants to two attempts a year. The percent of deer wounded and not recovered will be far greater than the usual percent if the proficiency test is lax. So will complaints and incidents. The application process as submitted should not be approved. I'm taking some of these rules I'm going to suggest from rules used by other Iowa cities. We should require portable tree stands and prohibit screw in steps nails or lag screws being driven into trees. Purpose is to protect trees and prevent poaching. We should require ID tags on hunter vehicles while hunting and on tree stands to identify them as approved and prevent poaching and other criminal activity. A minimum of three acres for hunted property is recommended and it's used in Ames. They can combine adjacent properties to meet the three acre requirement. They also require notification of all property owners within four hundred yards and written approval of all within two hundred yards. Deer run after being shot. Three acres greatly reduces chances of wounded deer ending up on property other than hunted property. It's highly unlikely that the deer collapses in the property where the deer is shot. We are going to have deer on neighboring properties. To eliminate neighborhood conflict, we should require written approval from all property owners within two hundred yards and notification of all property owners within four hundred yards. Hunted property should be posted. Iowa City rules allow for hunters on a property? Where did this even come from? I've never seen that in any rules anywhere. That sounds like a party and will invite and encourage stalking or driving of deer, which is prohibited. Button bucks, spike bucks and shed bucks don't qualify for the buck incentive. But to clarify, they should be checked in. Uncased bows are prohibited while traveling to and from the tree stand. That is good, but we need additionally, they should be prohibited from any public property, including trees, excuse me, streets, sidewalks, trails, parks or right of way. Arrows should have hunter ID in the event of lost arrows or violations. To properly investigate accidents, incidents or complaints, the police department should have a list of all hunters, the properties they are hunting, vehicle information and emergency contact information. The rules as submitted should not be approved. I have other suggestions as well, but I think it takes a good start, but I think we need a lot more work on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. All right. So counselors, we have certainly heard from individuals within the community. So thanks for everybody for reaching out and sharing your concern and your thoughts with us. So this is council discussion, and I think honestly, we can probably talk about both number fourteen and fifteen. But when we get to some voting, we'll have to do them individually.
Mayor, I had a follow up question from the staff presentation. I just wanted to pose the question a little bit differently. As someone who's new to council but observed the conversations during the when council considered this, I think about a year ago. I just want to ask the question this way. Is there any way that the city can comply with the commitments that were previously made and deny the bow hunt?
I don't know how that can be accomplished.
So in and just I'm just trying to be as clear as possible. So in order to comply with commitments that we have previously made, we would need to allow the bow hunt.
So I, well, I'll let staff, but I was present at the NRC meeting in July. And some of the individuals that were here was also present. And it was made very clear in that meeting, which was brought back to council, that bow hunting, we needed to be serious about bow hunting. And that's how we got allowed to do the sharpshooting. And and they and when we said, I think our term was, we were going to do bow hunting. But they wanted something meaningful. And so they inquire, they made sure that we had a number in there and that we inserted thirty, a minimum of thirty days.
And then it would need to start. And then it would need to start this year in 2020. Was that also a requirement?
It, it was a requirement not to be skipped either.
Okay.
That was kind of the agreement.
It'd have to be done from October to January, between October and January.
Yeah, I think, um, going forward after, after this year, if we want to make changes to that, if we, if we want to go for, you know, want to have a 30-day hunt, for example, we're gonna have to apply to the NRC and amend our deer management plan with them. And I, I, you know, you can never be sure until you, until you go through with it, but if you're gonna limit the hunt to 30 days, they're gonna have an expectation that there is ample ground to be able to get the, to, to be able to obtain the 75 tags. You know, this year is 75. We don't know what the next year will be. But, again, I, because there were some community comments on this, if we, if we know that 75 tags is, is the desired target that the, um, that our contractor advised and that the DNR also advised, I didn't think that there was a, a way that the community would tolerate that within a 30-day period because we'd have to have so much ground open to allow for 75 deer within that one-month period. So, again, the, the decision-making that, that we did is let's just extend it a little bit longer, but have it more restrictive and hopefully through the restrictions have less conflicts with neighbors. But again, I want to make it clear, if you, if you decide, if you decide that after this, um, season, if we move forward with it tonight, um, that you'd rather have a shorter period of time, we can apply to the, to the, um, Natural Resources Commission and ask for that. But I think we better be ready for the trade-off that comes with it, or at least the anticipated trade-off that I think will come with it.
And I also just wanted to clarify, um, because of the conversations of where the hunt could occur and making sure that people sort of knew what might be happening. We would only, there has to be written permission from the landowner prior to any hunt, right?
That's correct.
So, the, the hunt could not occur on someone's property that didn't know it would be happening?
Yes.
Okay, and, and what about the, um, possibility of notification requirements for adjacent properties or signage? Something like that? Have we explored those two things?
We, we did not go through and do adjacent property notification unless you needed that for the waiver. So, we used that 150-foot guidance there. And we did not require, uh, the signs either. Uh, frankly, you know, when you're, when you're gonna have a, um, a hunt for this long, to, to place a sign and expect that sign not to, not to be moved or, uh, tampered with. I, I just don't know that it's practical that we're gonna sign a yard and have that stay up the entire time. And I think we all have to recognize that, you know, there are people that are imminently opposed to, to bow hunting and we just have to, be careful not to, you know, there's risk of identifying where those, where that hunting's taking place because there could be adverse action taken against them. So, those are the things that, that, that we're weighing. Uh, obviously, we want to do this safely. We're not trying to create situations that'll, that'll have any conflict whatsoever. But we can do signs, we can do adjacent property notifications, we can do all that, you know, all those things. We've just tried to thread the needle a little bit to, to, to think about what works best here.
Okay. All right. So, um, any other comments by counselors or, or are we ready to make a decision?
I just want to make one clarifying comment. Um, I was not at that meeting with the DNR or the NRC. I had intended to go, that had been commented on in public that I was gonna go. I ended up with a conflict and so I was not at that meeting, just for the record.
One, one question and one last question for me would be, is there any language allowing the bow hunt to be terminated prior to, was it January, January 10th? Any language there where we could shut it down? Should we find we need to for whatever reason?
No, but we can certainly disqualify hunters. We can, um, uh, take action against, you know, again, property owners or hunters that are not following the rules. And then there is a limit to the number of deer. 75 is the maximum deer. So, if that number is achieved 60 days into the program, the hunting at that point is ceased.
Eleanor, how, how long it take if we decide to send something to the state to amend? You know, to give us like more time to start this? Like amending the agreement?
Well, it's approved by the Natural Resources Commission, which is a, is a body, not, not an individual. So, presumably, that body is gonna have to get together and make a decision and, and I, I assume that will take some time.
Jeff, um, back to your point about the, um, if the number of deer is reached before that January period, then the hunting would cease. Are these hunters that have been registered to hunt notified somehow then? Are letters sent to them? How, how do they know that, uh, they are, would not be able to hunt anymore in Iowa City?
It's all managed through the, the issuance of tags. And so, um, you have to have a tag to be able to hunt. And, and once those are all issued, you know, you, you don't have the ability to have unlimited hunting, uh, right? You, you, you are issued tags and then you, once those tags are up, you don't have the ability to hunt anymore. So, it's all done upfront in the process. And I, and I did just check, the next scheduled Natural Resource Commission meeting is January 22nd. After, after the season's over.
Hey, Jeff. Um, that's, that's, uh, January 22nd, 2020. There, uh, yeah.
Sorry, good catch.
Yep.
So, they have, um, a, a business meeting September 10th in Harrison County.
Yep, and then after that is October 8th.
Correct. Thank you for catching them, Mayor.
All right.
I have a quick question. I'm sorry, I just thought of this. If we have more, and maybe I didn't read this carefully enough, can one person get more than one tag? And if, if there are more than 75 applications, can there be, is there any preference in terms of Iowa City residents? How does that sort of thing work?
There, there is no preference policy. I think it would be a, based on the date of the application that we received and, and when everything's approved. I don't know offhand on any tag limits. You know, that's, that's administered through the state, so I, I don't, I, I'd have to check and get back to you on, on that.
Then we start with 30 days and after that, see if we can, if we needed to go to 100?
I mean, it does, I, I hear what you're saying, Maz, and that had been my preference, you know, well, we, from what we had done last year, but I certainly understand, you know, what the city manager and staff has done in terms of making that decision of being so restrictive in terms of the property that can be hunted with then feeling that the trade-off had to be going longer. And given that that's what staff has done and the timing of where we're at, it doesn't seem to me that we, you know, that we have the time to go back to the NRC and try and make adjustments to it at this point. And, and it's, it's a trade-off. I, I don't necessarily agree, disagree with what staff said. I, I think, and I certainly hear where staff is coming from. There was a lot of pushback about using public property for the sharpshooting. And so, I can certainly, uh, understand why staff's, why staff said or decided to restrict this to private property. And I think they probably made a pretty reasonable decision that the NRC, that there's no way the NRC would have approved a 30-day hunt with that significant of a restriction on the property. So, I mean, it, it makes, it makes sense to me.
But I think really, everything is going as slow as it is these days. Every single thing on, on the country. And if we want it slow on, like, uh, meeting the, the deadline that, you know, the, the commission or whoever approved this, give it to us, is still, we can have justified reason that why we, we, we did not make the first deadline, maybe. Because I, it seems like there's many things going on and we will now just, uh, can say our, like, we, we lay it on this because of what's going on in the country.
I think it's just a, a, a risk that the council needs to understand. If you want to, if you want to start this on November 1st um, and shorten the season by, by 30 days, I, I don't anticipate the state's gonna step in and, you know, take action against us. But we don't know, a- any action's gonna come in those future years and we don't know what that is. And, and we're gonna break that commitment that we made and then we're gonna be back there next year asking for some other modification. And there's gonna be no goodwill there. And we know we had a lot of back and forth with the state. I mean, they denied our application twice, I think, uh, before we finally got approval. So, um, you can certainly shorten it and you'd, you'd have good reason to do so for the reasons that councils articulated. You just have to know you're breaking that commitment and you'll either be setting yourselves up or future councils up for, for very, um, tough decisions and probably less leeway in, in the future.
I would recommend that we honor the commitment that we have made and if anything, try and get it modified next year. Try for a shorter one next year, maybe not all the way down to 30 days, but from roughly 100 or whatever it is now. Take some smaller number and try and reduce it in a manner that we hopefully can get approval on, but I, I'm concerned that if we violate that agreement now, we risk never being able to sharpshoot again, which I think we have seen has been absolutely essential to keeping the, the herd at a more reasonable.
I'm, I'm inclined to, um, move forward. It, this is, you know, this is not something any of us, you know, um, engaged in with, with any degree of enthusiasm. It's, it's, it's been a very long, drawn-out, difficult process. I'm extremely hesitant to, you know, change course at this point, um, especially because it is our first, our first endeavor in this regard. And, um, I, I don't know that we, you know, given all the uncertainties, could have crafted a perfect plan. And I appreciate all the comments that were made and many of them make sense to me. And if it's possible to, to make some revisions to some of the specifications, I would certainly support and encourage staff to, to look, look at some of these things. But overall, it seems to me that, um, I, I do feel a certain sense of obligation to the process we've gone through and that we learn from it moving forward in terms of all the factors that go into making the agreement, but, my feeling is at this point, the, to just move forward with what we have.
It sounds to me like we're probably going to move forward with this, but if we do, and I, I appreciate the time that went into, uh, the staff or whoever put the rules and requirements, uh, together. But I'd like to see them be a little bit more strict as far as some of the safety guidelines. Some of those suggestions that Ms. Crawford, Lori Crawford, uh, suggested sounded, uh, like they would be very, uh, very valid, uh, points. In particular, the proficiency test that she talked about. Uh, I don't know why, uh, we would be a little more lax and allow, uh, someone numerous attempts as opposed to, uh, hitting the target accurately within only two attempts. Cause I think, I mean, we want to ensure that it's like experienced, uh, accurate hunters out there. We don't want, uh, inexperienced, uh, folks out there, uh, hunting these deer. And she talked about the portable tree stands versus, um, and John, you've talked about this a lot, about our, our lack of tree canopy. And here we go, you know, pounding nails into trees and it just doesn't sound like a very good thing to me. Not being a hunter, I don't know the difference between a portable one versus the one that would be more stable hooked onto a tree, but I just think that sounds like a better idea. She talked about having some type of ID tags on these hunters and I think that's not a bad idea and I didn't see that in there. Maybe I missed that uh, as far as how they are going to be identified as being truly, uh, certified within the city to be able to be out there doing that. I, and I, and I had first thought about that we should post, uh, signs, notice signs that bow hunting may be occurring, but I think that was you, Jeff, that, uh, kind of did a valid argument on that as far as, uh, maybe that's not such a good thing. Oh, she also talked about like a three-acre minimum, uh, for property size to be hunting. And then also, uh, written approval of property owners, uh, within 400 yards. And I think those are kinds of things, I think, if we do go, go through with this, uh, and even, uh, extend the date out a little bit, uh, make it only 60 days instead of the 90 days. We should, uh, get a little more strict on these, uh, rules and requirements, just for safety's sake.
I guess for me, I, I, I had the conversation with NRC and, um, we really, um, I think none of us wanted to do this at all. And I was actually against us, uh, going to NRC with a proposal and I wanted us to go and negotiate, but nevertheless, we, we went with the proposal, um, and they really did modify their proposal to what they wanted. Um, and, and, uh, we, we were in a position where we needed to do the sharpshooting. Um, and so this was the compromise. So, for me, um, I'm going to, um, uh, definitely, this will be a year where we're learning a lot. Um, so I'm gonna support this tonight.
I just want to be, sorry. Just want to be really clear on the process. I think we, we have a, a number of people who've spoken tonight about, you know, trying to understand how city council makes decisions, the input that we receive, the deliberations that we have. And I, I hope that it's clear from this conversation that, um, we would be choosing to follow the commitment that we've made previously. And for myself, I just want to be explicit that that, that is a choice. I think we could choose to violate our previous commitments. We could choose to go against what the state has allowed. We could, you know, choose to, to say, you know, come punish us, we don't care. Um, and I think it's really important that we be consistent when it comes to something that has been carefully vetted and thoroughly considered and gone back and forth several times to try and meet conflicting and competing interests. So, I will be supporting this as a, a choice to uphold the commitment that we've made previously.
Well, I mean, I, I just think that even though I was one of the people who, like, voted for this commitment, sadly, and without any excitement, as everybody said. Uh, but at that time, I wasn't know this, we're gonna have coronavirus, we're gonna have all this going to happen. And, uh, and, and I believe that right now, everybody understanding if we cannot make the requirement uh, or the deadline. Uh, so I really will be, uh, in favor of, uh, just don't do it now. It was bonded and, um, I will bet with no for this.
Are we ready to vote, council? All right, we're gonna go back to item number 14 first. And we just finished council discussion. Roll call, please. And we just finished council discussion. Roll call, please.
Celine?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Motion passes five to two. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Mims.
Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yeah.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Celine?
Yes.
Item, uh, motion pass seven to zero. Item fifteen.
Whoa, five to two, wasn't it? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. So we're gonna go to item number fifteen, bow hunt rules and regulations and vote on that after council, uh, had already. Just previously have the, uh, their discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
No.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Celine?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Um, you didn't call it Teague. If you did, uh, yes.
Yes. You were first.
Oh, okay. Motion passes four to three. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Celine?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Motion passes seven to, uh, zero. Um, all right, we are on to number, item number sixteen. And a, uh, independent review of June third protest incident. Resolution authorizing the emeritus sign and the city clerk to attest a console agreement. With O I R group LLP to conduct a independent review of Iowa City's involvement in the use of tear gas and flashbang. Devices during the protests in Iowa City on June third, twenty twenty. Can I get a motion to approve?
So, and.
I think Laura got it. I was second.
All right, all right. Uh, so we'll go with Burgess, uh, moved and, uh, Mem seconded. And then is there any staff presentation on this item?
Uh, Mayor Council, I think we, uh, discussed this, um, at your previous meeting, but this is a contract with the. Um, O I R group, who is a, a firm that has extensive, um, experience in reviewing. Uh, incidents, uh, such as what occurred on June third. Uh, the city does not have any prior dealings with the O I R group. Um, and thus they are, are truly independent. We wouldn't anticipate that, uh, we would have future dealings with them either. Um, the billing rate is two hundred dollars an hour and, uh, the contract has a not to exceed. Of fifty, not to exceed amount of fifty thousand dollars. Uh, I would expect the cost of the review to be close to that fifty thousand dollars when it's all said and done. The end result will be a public report that's presented to the city council. Estimated completion from the O I R group is sixty to ninety days from the start of the engagement.
Any questions for Jeff? Here and now, and we're gonna go to, uh, public comment. And if you would like to address this topic, please raise your hand and I'm gonna call on you. And we ask you to keep your comments three to five minutes. Um, and if you're on the phone, you can press star nine. Uh, and we'll, um, I'll see your hand and call on you. We're gonna start with Renee, followed by Leanna. Welcome.
Hi. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right. Um, thank you for, um, allowing me to speak. I wanted to ask council, since a lot of protesters have been asking. Um, that the video of the events of June third be released publicly, um, for accountability purposes, um, for our community. If council is gonna have discussion about that, um, as of now. And, um, I'm also asking, um, that if. There are repercussions for that, that there'd be a written, um, argument for that, that the city attorney presents to our community. Um, for why we can't have this video, the video that is, you know, um, already available of what happened on those on June third. Um, be presented to our community.
Okay. Thank you. And I think, um, um, as far as I'm concerned, that's gonna come up in council discussion. A, as far as the video on, on this item. Am I right, counselors?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Great. All right. Uh, thank you, Renee. Uh, Leanna followed by Sophia.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, also just clarification, the pronunciation of my name is Leanna. Anna. Yes, but thank you. Um, yeah, so I just, I want to stand behind Renee and what she's brought up. I think those are both very, two very important questions and points that need to be discussed. Um, and. Uh, kept into the picture, I suppose. Um, I would also like to bring into question that the demand initially was to have. Um, the report completed by August first, I believe if I remember correctly. Um, and so due to this and due to slowly as a process of moving along, that we have found out that there is a video in which the shots have been called. Um, I would like to stress the importance of also releasing that video completely in its entirety to the public, along with the final report that the. External review board, I guess, uh, comes out with finally, um, due to this being an issue of transparency and an issue of. The legitimization, I suppose, of council and its operations. I think both of which, especially due to the magnitude and the severity of. ICPD and State Patrol and any, uh, formal officers' involvements with the Iowa City community, that this is of the utmost importance. To have available to the public, um, in terms of both transparency, legitimization and, um. For, for, like, the entirety of the community that was involved and affected by this. Um, that's all I have. So thank you again for letting me speak.
Thank you. Sophia, follow my Annie.
Hello. So I just wanted to stand behind Renee and Leanna as well. And, uh, like Leanna asked. Leanna, I think I'm saying that correctly said, I, the original demand was to have it done by August first. And I'm just wondering that if council truly cares about the community, the way that they say they can, care about the community. And if they truly support Black Lives Matter, the way that they're saying they support Black Lives Matter. I was, I'm wondering why there's so much stall in helping us receive justice for something that was done to us by the Iowa City Police Department. When this should have been done a month ago and we're just now talking about starting to look into it. A month later than when it was supposed to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Annie?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, um, I just wanted to repeat the sentiments that past people have shared regarding releasing the video and, um. Proceeding with the independent investigation. Um, personally, I'm curious about where that fifty thousand dollars will come from. And might I suggest that comes from the police budget? And why don't we just throw up all the budget while we're at it? Thanks.
Thank you, Annie. David?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, just wanna voice my support for everything everyone else just said. Um, I think that's a, a pretty easy one that. Any other folks who, uh, were the victims of that violence ought to get to see the video and know, uh, exactly what happened. Thank you.
Lori, follow, uh, Lori Crawford, followed by Lori Kendrick.
I also want to voice my support for what all the people before me said and asked that the video be released. And I also feel that I think it's two hundred thousand dollars that's been approved, that that should come from the police budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Kendrick, followed by Brian.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'd just like the video to be released. The public needs to know what happened. And be able to see that and view it. And surely there's nothing to hide from the city's point, the police department's point. So please release a video. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian? Welcome.
Uh, thank you for having me. And I'd just like to, uh, echo again what those before me have said. And, uh, put my support towards the releasing of. The video on what happened on that June third protest as, uh, in order to build trust and transparency. With the community, especially in the times that we are now, that. It is in everyone's best interest so that everyone can move forward together as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Stephanie? Hello, Stephanie. Welcome.
Thank you. It just took a minute for the unmute button to come up. I'm also just going to speak as an eyewitness to that account. I can kind of understand why the city doesn't want to release that video, but I still think in the interest of transparency. And public and rebuilding public trust that it should be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council? Uh, Supervisor Porter, welcome. Can you hear us? You're on mute. Um, we can't hear you. Okay.
Mayor, I'm trying to promote her to see if that helps with her volume.
Okay. Hello, Supervisor Porter.
Can you hear me now?
We can, yes.
Absolutely. Um, I'm just gonna state that I think the video for transparency, the video should be released. Um, just why? Continue, um, for people to just continue to say, um, to not release the video for transparency. Let's just release the video.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Would anyone else like to address council? Saying no one, council discussion.
Oh, go ahead, Janice.
Um, first, I, I'd like to say that the, just as, as background that, um, the, the dates put in. The days put in turned out to be unworkable. It was, we determined we couldn't have an internal investigation. It took some time. To find a fir, an firm that, that was, that had no relationship, higher relationship with us that. That could do an independent investigation. I would have liked for this to have been settled, um, a month and a half ago as well. Um, and second. I, I'm not, I'm honestly not aware that any of us ever said it shouldn't be released. This came up for the first time at the last council meeting. Uh, of course it should be released as a matter, as a matter of transparency. There is, um, there's, there's nothing to hide. And there's no doubt in my mind, um, that we should release it. Uh, and I also believe that we should, that, that we should do the. That we should do the independent investigation so that we can, so that, so that we as a community, as well as the police department. Can learn and take whatever lessons are needed, especially when we also will eventually have a new police chief coming on.
I also believe that, um, the video, since it's been, uh, brought up publicly, should, should be, uh, released. For anyone who would like to see it. I'd like to tell people, I was told it's about two hours long. Need to remind people of that. Uh, but I think we have to, uh, not lose sight of the fact that what we're talking about now is this, uh, resolution before us to. Uh, follow through with this independent contractor investigator. And I do believe, uh, we should do that. Uh, video or not, uh, because we made a commitment in good faith that, that we would do that. We would investigate, uh, the incident. And, uh, we need to follow through with that. And we have an obligation to do that. Uh, we've gotten an email and someone called it a meaningless investigation, but it's not a meaningless investigation. It's, it's very important to. Uh, to help determine, uh, compliance, uh, in accordance with the use of force that was, uh, used that night. Uh, and it's, it's would be a very unbiased, comprehensive review. And I think, uh, that, that will be important and, and prove to be, uh. Invaluable for us. So I'm in favor of it.
I would agree, um, I think to release videos of that night. Um, and there are, there are many videos with all of our officers having body cams on. Um, and each of those are approximately an hour long. And so I think that's important for that transparency. Um, I have taken the opportunity to view two of those. I think the same two that the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem viewed. Um, and they will give different views depending upon which officer's body cam, um, you, you watch. So there could be a lot of those. So I think it's important for that for transparency. We've had, certainly had a, uh, freedom of information request, I understand. Um, and I think it meets any of our requirements, um, or doesn't violate any of our, our issues in terms of when we, what might withhold for investigative purposes. To go to this particular item of the independent investigation. I, I just wanna reiterate what Janice said. It certainly, in the beginning when we had set a date, it was definitely our intent to have this done. Much, much earlier. Um, but it was certainly clear that doing it internally was not going to work. It wasn't going to be trusted by the public. And as Janice said, it took much longer. Um, because our police department does have relationships across the state of Iowa that we had to find somebody outside of state. And it took staff a while. To do that. Um, and so we have done that. We have this now. We've got the contract ready. Um, I think it is important, not just for, um, the transparency there and the. And, and the public knowing what's going on as well as internally. And particularly having watched those videos, um, and having, you know, talked with the city manager at times when. Various protests have going on and, and what their decision processes are. I think we can learn an awful lot from this investigation to inform decisions that we haven't even thought about yet. And that has to do with, how do we work with other law enforcement agencies? Um, and that's, that's not even in our resolution. Uh, we have certain of our own policies. But how does this inform, um, our, our cooperation with our, our working with. Being in the same area with, um, other law enforcement agencies. And I think that is, is a really, really big factor as we go forward. So I would hope to learn a lot from that, that would inform policies that we aren't even talking about yet.
Um, for me, the, um, the resolution that we passed on June sixteenth is item four. Um, it talks about by August first, twenty twenty, we'll receive a report from the city manager on, on the ICE, Iowa City Police Department. Involvement in the use of gas and flashbang devices during the protests in Iowa City on June third. So. Um, in, in the resolution that we had, it was to be by August first, and that was to be. Uh, received and submitted by the city manager of the police department's involvement. It became very clear after this resolution that that was something that, um, no matter. Um, how it was, uh, processed and presented, um, it, it would just wasn't gonna be well received by. Um, maybe some in the, in the community. And so we took a different avenue where council did. Uh, ultimately, uh, decide that we would go through this independent review. Um, what happened was the last meeting, Mayor Pro Tem and I, we had, uh, viewed the video because. Um, my initial question, even when we decided to do the independent review, my initial question was. Well, everybody just wants to know, uh, who did it, who made the call. That was the question. Personally, um, I, I wasn't totally, um, thinking that we needed the review. Um, because if it was that simple question, then, you know, maybe there was a way for us to the, to do that answer. But I did vote yes, because the majority of council, um, wanted to do the review. And I, I, I was supportive of it, no doubt. Um, that, that was the direction that we should go because of the sentiments of every, uh, one that was involved. Nevertheless. Our last meeting, I personally, um, wasn't the, what was maybe the dissenting vote. Along with our mayor pro temp. But, um, where, where we thought, you know, that. Um, we can go through, um, with the study, but it, if it's just. Who did it? We can tell you who did it, but, or, or who made the call. Nevertheless, um, after much consideration. I do believe that we should go forth with this, um, independent, uh, review. Uh, it's already been mentioned, we can learn a lot from it. And, um, I will be supporting that tonight. And I'm also supportive of the release of, uh, the video footages.
I just wanna ask questions.
I just want to ask questions before I can go, yeah, what when is the investigation supposed to start if we, we approve this today?
So we have a contract that's in your packet. We would need to execute that with the OAR group, which is essentially getting the signatures. And then we need to provide them all of the information that we have related to that event. So I, I think it, you know, initiates in the next week or two. By the time we get contracts signed and, and all the files that are associated with the event over to them. At that point, it's up to them to, to sit through those and, and to follow up with additional questions, interviews, whatever they deem is necessary to gather the information to, to fully investigate. The caveat to that is the investigation is Iowa City Police Department's involvement. They are not investigating, nor do they have the authority or power to investigate any other law enforcement agency that was up there that night.
Okay. And when you say investigate Iowa City Department, what kind of question that they are investigating? Only who made the call or there is more into it?
No, it's, it's much more extensive than that. And I think the best thing to do is to look at the contract itself, which is on page 251 of your packet. So it's a scope of services is, is section one, and there's number letters A through I. And it's everything from a description of the events leading up to that night, description of the command structure there, kind of laying out the scene for the public. The, the exact timeline that evening on, on when things occurred. The quantity and the type of force that was used by the Iowa City Police Department. Review of any known injuries to the public or law enforcement and how those injuries were sustained. And then any other pertinent information that will help the public understand the response and, and guide decisions in the future. Additional review of our use of force policy and then recommendations for changes to our use of force policy or any training that would should be considered in the event that we find ourselves in similar situations in the future. So it's, it's truly recreating what happened there, telling the story of that, of that night. And, and then again, that most important piece is, how do we learn from it? Whatever, whatever is found by that group and whatever the public finds, because once you release the video, the, the, the public will, will form their own opinions too. We have to listen to those and we have to respect those. We have to have those conversations as a community is what do we learn? What do we learn from the public who sees the video? What do we learn from the independent review that sees the video? And how can we move forward?
But exactly, exactly. That's what I, my second question will be. After the public review of the video, if the video raised more questions and we need investigation of those more questions, can we submit this question to the independent review?
With, with certain limitations, yes. Again, we, we can't, we, we can't force the Iowa State Patrol or any other law enforcement agency that was up there to participate in the review. So if the question is why did Iowa State Patrol or why did law enforcement agency X do this? Then no, we can't, we can't have them do that because they don't have the ability to compel that type of response. It's solely limited to our actions.
I understand that. That's, I'm, I'm saying that if the public find out in the video, more thing that they want to question and they want to investigate about Iowa City Police Department, I'm not talking about any other department. Is there is a way we can add those question to the review? Like say, for example, they say, we would like to investigate such thing or to add, to ask the independent review or to investigate that thing, which is, is not being on the original contract.
I think this, this is Eleanor. I, I think it's just a question of, of how how that expands the contract. If, if it's not a large expansion and it's just something that is part of the review anyway and is, can, can easily be accomplished. If it's, if it's a question that is really going to increase the amount of time that the consultant has to spend on addressing it, then we may have to do an amendment to the contract to account for that.
Okay. Your answer will lead me to another question, which is, when can we, how soon can we release the video? If we approve it today?
I think, I think Jeff and I have talked about it in terms of just kind of the logistics of getting it out there and we're thinking probably Thursday. Was that right, Jeff?
Yeah, that would be my hope is that we would put it out Thursday. We would have a short, objective narrative that goes with it, that again, provides a little bit of context to the release of the videos. Want to make sure that we fact check anything with that narrative with any other law enforcement agencies, just so we're ensuring that everything that we put out is 100% correct. But I think, I think Thursday is a reasonable goal. If something unforeseen comes up, certainly I would say Friday, but Thursday would, would be my intention.
Okay. You said early that, you know, the independent review, you don't know when it's going to start because you have to collect all this data that they require. That means maybe it will be time between we release it to the public and between the independent review started. I just want to, yes, see that if there is anything has been raised by the, you know, by the public before we send the contract and finalize it. I wish those things will be included on the investigations.
Well, I think you'd have to defer the vote on the contract then.
Yeah, the, the contract, just, just as a clarification, the contract has already been signed by OIR. And, and that's standard practice. Yeah. And that's standard practice because we want the council to be approving a contract that we're not going to have to change after you approve it. And so we want to make sure by getting the consultant's signature that, that the consultant is okay with it. So the consultant has signed the contract and you're approving this contract. If, if you want changes to it, then we're going to have to go back and talk to the consultant, get those changes made and then have you approve it.
If that means if the public come up with another question and we already signed the contract, we cannot investigate it?
No, that's, that's not accurate. I think what we would do then is then we would, if, if a question came up that we wanted the consultant to review, then we would, we would bring that to the attention of the consultant. If, and then if, if the consultant thinks that that's just a minor issue that he can incorporate into the rest of the review, then we won't need to do anything with the contract. We may have to negotiate a change in, in the amount that we're paying him.
Okay. Just like kind of is, we, we might pay more money.
Sure.
It is. Okay. Okay. The last thing I want to really, you know, propose is if the council agree, of course. I, I, nothing against the city or Jeff, but I would like the mayor to, really, I will encourage the mayor to sign the contract. Because, you know, yes, it doesn't make sense for me. You know, the, the person who paying that people is the person who signed the contract. Yes, to me, I just believe that we should give authorization to the mayor to sign the contract with the independent review.
That's the way the, the resolution reads currently is it authorizes the mayor to sign it?
Sure. Yeah. Okay. Uh, yeah. And my, my last comment will be, yes, I will support releasing of the two video. And also, you know, as soon as possible and Thursday is fine. And also I'm supporting the, the independent.
I agree for all the reasons that other counselors and members of the public have articulated, I think it's really important that we move towards building trust. It's apparent that we have a long way to go with that, but I think transparency is really important. And I just want to thank the public for understanding that this is a process. This is new to us and we are moving in a way that we think is as fast as we can and being responsible for the needs of independence and being thorough and being careful and not just, just going forward in a way that we think is truly accountable to the public. So I, I support both the release of the video and the independent investigation.
Yeah, I also agree that we need to, to release the video and you know, Jeff kind of laid out the scope of the services. So it is, it is both looking back at June 3rd and then looking forward in terms of what policies with regard to the use of force may need to be revised based on those findings. So I, I think in that regard, it will be a useful document, understanding what happened and then how that might translate to policy revisions. So I will be supporting moving forward with the, with the investigation.
All right. Anyone else? So we do have before us the item number 16, which is the independent review of June 3 protest incident. Uh, which we're going to take a vote on here in a second, but I, I wanted to just maybe give Jeff a clear direction because I think we can do this without a vote on the video. And so I just want to see majority of heads. I, I think I've already heard the majority say yes. So Jeff, you have that direction. And then with that being said, we're going to do roll call or item number 15, which is the, to do the independent review of June 3 protest incident. Roll call please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgis?
Just to clarify, it's item 16.
16.
Yes.
Uh, Mims?
Yes.
Calee? Calee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So.
Seconded, Burgis.
Roll call please.
Burgis?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Calee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 17, Truth and Reconciliation Commission. Resolution establishing ad hoc truth and reconciliation commission. Can I get a motion to approve?
So.
Second, Thomas.
All right. And do we have any staff presentation on this?
No staff presentation. I believe this has been guided by counselors Burgis and Weiner.
Great. Uh, would you all like to take an opportunity now or do we want to hear from the public?
I would, I would just to frame this a little bit, I would just say that, you know, from, from the outset, our goal was to essentially really create a framework and, and give the, what, whatever, the, what we decide to be the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, a fair amount of leeway. Knowing that it is a city commission and knowing that the, the, the rules that, the, the public, the public record rules and the other things that my now tired mind are not going to allow me to remember exactly how to say will all apply to a city commission. So we have, we have the, the draft that Council Burgis and I worked on. We have a series of amendments that, that the, that IFR has proposed. We have, I believe, sort of essentially a, a version that, that shows both of those together. And in, in the latest handouts, I'm aware that we got at least one other set of revisions. So I don't, you know, I don't, I don't know what obviously the council will decide to do. I want to hear what the public comment is on the version, on the version before us and and then and, and also recognize that there is an urgency to get this done. And at the same time, it's really important that we take whatever other public comment we get today and, and have a chance to look at what came in, in the, in the very late handouts that I honestly didn't have a chance to read just before the meeting. And I would suggest that, that we consider basically merging those all into one document and either having a, a separate meeting to deal with that or deal with it as a priority at our next meeting so that we can actually, so that we can really get it done now that we will have had the input from all the various players and organizations.
All right. So I think we're going to open up a public comment. And we're going to ask people to raise their hands. And if you're on the phone, you can press star nine to speak to counsel. And I will call you one by one. Uh, Renee? Welcome. Followed by Angie Jordan.
Hello.
Hi. So this, um, this resolution that Counselor, the amendments to the resolution that Counselor Janice Winter was speaking about earlier is, is the draft that IFR has sent after working with various members of the community who are experts in human rights and TRC commissions, as well as other community leaders within the community. We thought that the existing resolution did not, um, one, talk enough about, did not acknowledge the painful systemic, you know, aspects of racial injustice in Iowa City. And that two, it didn't have enough information regarding the independence of the commission in terms of allowing it to do the work, the meaningful work that it needs to do. We also added some conversation, we added some amendments that talked about actually implementing sustainable systemic change after the fact finding aspect of the commission. Because as we all know from past truth and reconciliation commissions across the country, that truth doesn't necessarily always lead to reconciliation. And so I hope that members of the public are able to look through these amendments that IFR has come up with in attempts to actually make this commission something that has, actually has teeth and is able to do the work that it needs to be done in our community. Thank you.
Angie Jordan? Followed by David. Um, you're coming through robotic.
Robotic, okay.
Oh, you're clear now.
All right. Hi, guys. First, I want to say thank you to the Iowa Freedom Rider leaders for including the TRC and their list of demands to the city council earlier this summer. That's a really big deal. Their demands are all big deals. But I want to speak on this one. I also want to thank the IFR for actively engaging the framework with multiple drafts of the resolution while also putting their energy and heart into protesting. Multitasking is really, really difficult to do and I just want to say that I appreciate them. I want to give gratitude to Councilwomen Burgis and Weiner for creating the framework, framework for the resolution. As a South District resident in Iowa City and speaking as an individual representing myself, I'm grateful for the process like this to include resident feedback and that it exists to gather voices that aren't always heard. I also appreciate the time that's been put into this process for creating this TRC resolution. In recent IFR edit of the resolution framework, I want to offer specific personal feedback. I really hope others in the community, especially those in residential areas that are underrepresented, do the same, whether it's through public comments or writing to the council. This way, many voices can be heard. With that being said, and working off of recent edits, and I stay within a five minute timeframe. There are many things I want to highlight and agree strongly with. Personally, I think it's important to keep a lot of the language IFR has added to the resolution. Three examples specifically include systematic racism and white privilege being deeply resistant to change. To me, this language solidifies and reinforces its presence and that it exists and that it's unacceptable and that we can't ignore it. A second one would be the commission, the TRC commission must be empowered to stimulate difficult conversations and reach and engage a full cross section of the community, including those parts of the community. Not otherwise inclined to engage. That's a big one. including those parts of the community, not otherwise inclined to engage. That's a big one. Um, and then a third and final example of language. As city council recognizes that truth by itself, Renee just talked about this, it does not always lead to reconciliation. And that the council needs to dedicate itself to systemic reparative changes to organizations that identify uh, within truth telling instances. I believe that this language is so important in giving the commission, like Renee said, the teeth, not just to collect and share and make recommendations, but to hold people and places publicly accountable. Uh, another part I want to highlight, and I'm going to try to talk a little faster, so hopefully I don't break up. Uh, was brought up in initial drafts, uh, where the focused attention on the mandate of the TRC includes, but is not limited to fact finding, truth telling and reconciliation. Since this is new territory, I believe the TRC commission needs space to create and be creative and explore. A final part that I strongly agree with in the edits to the written framework include language that the TRC, uh, may require specialized and robust mechanism to protect. If we should speak out, a piece that I would like to add to the framework would go along with the importance of a facilitator funded by the city with expertise and experience, not just in group facilitation and human rights, but also experience and expertise and diversity explicit, uh, rather implicit and explicit, all the implicits. Bias mediation, conflict resolution, awareness and understanding of different ways to communicate and different ways to process information. I feel it's important because I believe the commission is going to be made up of folks who are coming together for a common goal and perhaps also very different perspectives, different experiences, different ideas. One of my many hopes for this commission is to model truth seeking and reconciliation. Finally, the last two parts I asked council to consider are based on my understanding of city commissions and how they are to make recommendations to the council that then votes and then the city manager carries out the decision with that understanding. And I could be totally wrong and not understanding anything right now. Um, but I would suggest taking out item two and item twelve in the IFR edited version, recent edited version of the resolution based on concerns setting a precedent that could negatively impact the TRC commission and future city commissions legitimacy. Thank you, guys, for listening and for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Angie. Uh, David, followed by Sabree.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, yeah, I just want to support, uh, what Renee said and, and the vast majority of what Angie said too. I really liked Angie's, um, phrasing of making sure that the uh, commission can be creative and explore and just to support, uh, both of their ideas that, you know, this thing needs to have power. Um, I don't pretend to be an expert. I think Renee and, uh, Angie and Aaron Page probably know a lot more about this stuff, but if I can add one piece, maybe it's from the, uh, from like the research literature, from the academic literature and folks who have looked at the TRC in South Africa and others around the world in the country, you know, the main issue, um, the main complaint that comes from these, the main failures is always when the commission does not have the authority to, to act on the findings that come from the truth telling. Um, so just want to leave it there, leave my support on. There's also a piece put out by the, the United Nations, they have a full, uh, truth commissions, uh, sort of overview about how this has been done around the world. It's not too long, so I would recommend folks take a look at that and see how power has been, um, implemented in, in various systems across the world and throughout history. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Sabree, followed by Tanner.
Hi, my name is Sabree and I just wanted to, uh, offer support for the IFR amendments, um, and, uh, support, uh, second with, second, so to speak, uh, what Renee is saying and, um, and also, uh, Angie's articulations and identify myself as someone who grew up in, uh, the South District in Broadway neighborhood here, um, and has lived in a number of, of neighborhoods and experienced, uh, police violence, uh, even as a poor white person, uh, but recognizing that, that there are a lot of people, I think, you know, uh, in, in the area who don't fully understand. And then also offer, uh, kind of another seconding again of, uh, uh, bringing in what, what is seen and known from around the world, uh, like the IFR members did of, of research and looking into, uh, truth and reconciliation commissions. As somebody who, uh, has studied at least academically, uh, truth and reconciliation, uh, how it happened in South Africa and, uh, one of the people who's involved, Martha Nussbaum from the University of Chicago and studied under people who worked in Calcutta, um, and it, it studied mediation to just also ask the city to, uh, make this commission and, uh, ask the future commission to, how, have that ability, uh, built in to make sure this happens, to have action based on active listening of people who have these experiences in getting, uh, that, that truth told and, and acted on and accountability the way people want. People who've experienced it, uh, under IFR's leadership and whom IFR chooses. Thank you and thank you, Mary Teague and, uh, Sully and, and Weiner and Burgis and everybody for your work on this too.
Thank you. Tanner and, um, we, I, I'm going to allow Renee to come back. Um, but we only allow people to speak, we want, address council once. But, and we're going to ask everybody to continue to keep your comments three to five minutes.
All right. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, so I actually wasn't even planning on saying anything tonight, but this is just something that I wanted to express and I'll try to keep it quick. Um, I realized I just, I had kind of a weird feeling late on to the meeting tonight when we started talking about this video and I thought about some of the other issues that we discussed tonight. And not to detract from any of them, they're all important, but some of them, I think we could have predicted going in that it wouldn't really generate very much discussion. And I just feel that it's odd that we're talking about this now. And that isn't even when I was going to say something. But then I heard a comment, um, from somebody about their, uh, their difficulty thinking right now because they're tired. And I don't want to single anybody out because I've heard this remark from many other people in the past at, uh, at separate meetings, but, uh, just something that I heard and I think maybe we could think about our priorities and how to maybe mend our relationship or improve our relationship with the IFR and their supporters. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee, followed by Leanna.
I, I just wanted to speak, um, to Angie's previous points about, um, amendment two and twelve in terms of independence. Um, the principle of independence is really important for IFR to be present in the, in the resolution because the committee, like Angie said, this is unprecedented and this commission in itself is doing work that has not been done by any commission within Iowa City. And, um, for part of that is the commission's power and the ability to investigate the city itself uh, and staff within the city for, um, instances, instances of racial injustice and oppression within our community for the past hundreds of years. And that, those investigations would truly be, um, kind of hindered if we don't, if the commission does not have this budget independence and this independence to actually make decisions in terms of what it is, um, pursuing as a whole commission. And so this, I just want to reiterate again, the importance of having this independence and if there are legal restrictions to why we can't have this, um, independence that we need, a written letter by, from the city attorney, um, describing why these legal reasons are present. Um, because as IFR is really important for us, um, this commission is going to be doing a lot of important work. Um, that again has, is unprecedented and has not been done by any commission, um, within our community and needs to have the power, um, that it needs to actually do this meaningful, um, make meaningful changes than our, within our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll have Leanna. And I, I'm not sure if I pronounced her right. I tried.
I appreciate it. No, it's Leanna.
Leanna.
Like soft A. Yep, there you go. Uh, yeah, so this time around, I only actually just have a question. I saw the first, one of the earlier drafts of the TRC and its proposal. Um, but the last two city council meetings, I've been looking on the website through both the IC gov slash BLM and just the normal city council documents. I cannot find any, um, like drafts or like the current proposal, I suppose, for the upcoming TRC. Could you redirect me to where that is? And may I suggest making that more transparent or putting that directly on the BLM website because that is one of the demands?
I think it was in the late handouts. We, we didn't get.
The late ones, okay.
Yeah, so we didn't get that until yesterday. So depending on when you went, I, I'm not sure, but it, it was in the late.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. If there's anyone else that want to address council, please feel free and raise your hand. Uh, Roy Sam Porter, supervisor porter. So we can't hear you yet, but we know you're there. Still can't hear you. Uh, it looks like your mic is on mute and looks like you have two devices o, over there. I'm assuming Kelly, you're trying to promoter.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you perfect now.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Um, I'm gonna read this. Ensuring justice is our goal and we believe the city council has shown interest in doing this. Black Voices Project is no stranger to calling on city council to change things. We have built a trusting relationship and right now we have the opportunity to accomplish a lot as a community. We want to work collaboratively with, uh, everyone, a part of the BIPOC community to ensure we're united in many ways to get the justice needed and deserved. We are extremely proud of our black leadership. Our mayor and our mayor pro team made history through their elections by their unique qualities. They were appointed in their current roles by the council and this says a lot about the opportunity we have with this appointment. We should be open about the amount of stress everyone is under right now and try to give each other support and grace. And as far as, uh, what Angie said, what Renee said, and what Angie said, uh, Angie, Angie, you nipped it in the bud. You really put the icing on the cake. Uh, thank you for what you had to say. Uh, when I go back and look at, looking at the draft and look at, um, the I R I F, I, I, I personally want to thank y'all for putting this together because uh, we really tried to see what, what it was that we could do to get behind you, to support you. Um, in the efforts that you've made and y'all have done a wonderful job. Um, aside all of the BS and everything else, I do want to say thank you for everything that you've done because you have gotten the ball rolling. Um, without you all, we would not be where we are today as far as making the change in our community. Um, as far as when looking at the draft, um, I, in, um, I guess paragraph, uh, number two, uh, where it says the TRC, um, the TRC is not a separate branch of government, therefore they can be released from the obligations to the mayor or the city council. I would ask that that be looked at because of the simple fact, the mayor is the mayor. We have a black mayor and, and, and a black mayor pro team. And, uh, I think we should be able to go to those people. They should not be excluded. Uh, all obligations released, no, they are who, um, will be, uh, riding with us throughout this whole thing and to have them a part of this is awesome. Um, so I really looked at that and I was like, well, this is not a separate branch. So I ask that you all, um, strike that out because I definitely think that the mayor and the mayor pro team is some people. Um, if, if there's some things that the commission, the TRC is going through, um, they should be able to talk to the mayor, the mayor pro team. I don't think, um, the mayor pro team and, uh, the mayor and the mayor pro team should be able to communicate back and forth because that's what I'm looking for. Um, I actually served on the PCRB Police Citizen Review Board, which was changed to the Citizen Police Review Board. I served on that board for six years. So I know what it is. Um, to, to, uh, be on the board and you work so hard and you want, um, justice everybody and you see that it really didn't work. And so that's what, I'm speaking on that part. Um, in paragraph five and six, I just wanted to say, do you already have someone in mind for the consultant? Um, I didn't know. I just wanted to check. Um, where did the one million dollars originate? That was one of my questions. Um, and is the consultant pay separate from that? That's, that's, that's a question for me. Number ten is the task of wanting privy to special insight and information, asking for special powers. That I know for a fact, as I hear myself and, um, all the towns and, um, different people who have served on the Citizen Police Review Board, we were able to watch videos, but, um, when there was a problem, uh, even with an officer, we never knew who the officer was. It was always a number, um, one through one hundred. Um, the officers, uh, went by a number, um, when we did an investigation, we watched many, um, we, as the commission, uh, was able to watch a lot of the, um, recordings of the police and still come up with, uh, what we thought, um, in our votes and, and things didn't go well. So, um, I was just saying to, uh, wanting special privy, privy to insight, um, and special powers is, 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 I, I, I'm, I'm hoping that the people on the council was listening because this is the part where we didn't, we just didn't, this is the part that didn't give us any teeth. And if it's going to be a commission, I know it's not, um, this is a commission, like they said already, that's, it's a special commission and we wanted to make change. And in order to make change, you got to make some, some, some special changes. Um, and then the, the last thing I just want to speak on is Iowa City Johnson County, hoping that county residency for TRC should be ongoing requirements so that we will reduce the, uh, chances of having people with no skin in the game beyond this shot callers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Well, counselors. It is our time to have a conversation.
Can we be, um, clear what exactly we're looking at here and, and voting on the resolution? Um, because what we have in our packet, what we received in our packet, uh, is just kind of a basic three pages here. Uh, that seems to be a very good, excellent, um, framework, uh, to, to start the process of establishing the commission, which, uh, we need to do. We need to get going on that. If we want to put uh, applications out there for people to apply, we need to get those kind of guidelines, but some of our speakers are talking, seem to be talking about, uh, the list we just got on that, the seventy pages of, of late handouts we got, it was tucked into that and, and I did take the time to read it, but it, and it was a little bit more extensive than what we see in front of us here in our packet. Uh, and I don't think we've had time to digest that and vote on that, but this basic framework that we see here, uh, I, I think is very good, although I do agree with, um, Supervisor Roy Sam Porter's comment about, uh, the residency requirement. Uh, I, we've heard from some folks even, uh, limited just to, I, resident in Iowa City, which some of our boards and commissions, um, they do talk about that, uh, as far as have Iowa City resident. Uh, I think she mentioned county, but I mean, that could be up for, uh, discussion too, I guess, but otherwise, yeah, what we see in this packet, I, I think is fine and is a good framework, uh, to start with. But what are we voting on?
Well, I, I don't think, um, at this point, we're at a vote, voting stage. We're at a, uh, a stage of going through and looking at the document or documents that's been submitted or council thoughts on how the resolution, um, uh, could play out. So we're, we're really at a place of, uh, drafting and, or looking at the drafts and, uh, finalizing on that and wordsmithing the document at this juncture. And then after that, we can make a decision.
I just want to add a little bit of, um, context here because I think this procedurally, this is so unprecedented, right? And, and I, and I talk a lot about process. Um, and so the idea of having, uh, a resolution without a recommendation from staff is, is kind of unprecedented, right? And having, um, a resolution that's being, um, drafted, like literally red line, um, recommendations from different stakeholders is unprecedented. And so I, I'm, I'm nervous that I, I, I appreciate very much what the member from the public said about being tired and I hope, you know, if, if he heard that as an excuse, but we have been here for six hours tonight and I, I'm not comfortable going forward, trying to wordsmith. And I'm not comfortable going forward, trying to wordsmith, bringing in IFRs requested changes and the things that Angie mentioned and the things that Supervisor Porter mentioned. I'm not confident that we could reach that and vote on it tonight. I do think this is one of the things from our 17-point resolution that we committed to forming the commission by October 1st. So we definitely have urgency, but I think we've been, we've struck a very good balance with this particular initiative in taking the care and the time to receive the input and think critically about something new and big, and also not rushing through it. I do just want to say, big picture, as far as what the content of the resolution could provide. We are the city council of Iowa City, and we work within the parameters of the laws that we have. And we can certainly advocate for, if we can't change the laws, we can advocate for others to change the laws. But I think we need to be realistic in terms of our urgency with this commission and wanting it to move forward this fall and to get underway this fall. That there will be limitations as to what the commission can and can't do, and specifically about the teeth question. And I think it might be, you know, because we're trying to think creatively and to collaborate with those in the community who want and need this work to be done with us. That maybe there are other entities that could supplement, you know, the work of this commission, but really legally couldn't be within the scope of the commission itself. I just don't want anyone to feel misled that we would have the authority to create from whole cloth. For example, the ability to subpoena people. I don't think that we have legal basis to do that and that that would require a state law change. Eleanor, please interrupt if you've got anything more on that specifically, or if I'm wrong there. But I just want to be upfront about that because we're trying to be transparent and we're trying to be, we're trying to listen and incorporate the elements of value. And we know that that is an important element, and it may just be one that we, that we as the city of Iowa City and as a city commission, which is what we have the power to create, we just may not be able to provide that specific element.
No, go ahead, Janice.
Please go ahead, Eleanor, because Laura specifically asked for your.
Well, the issue of subpoena power, I think, is complicated. I think an argument can be made that you can provide it, but the question is to what end? There is no punitive or punishment aspect of this process. You know, with the CPRB, for instance, you've got a question about correcting behavior or officer discipline, et cetera. We're not talking in this instance about recommendations that then will result in prosecution or some kind of punishment. In fact, if we're going to be investigating discrimination in terms of discrimination that's actionable, we have a human rights commission and a human rights ordinance that allows for filing of discrimination complaints. If there's a discrimination complaint that is, that arrived, that arose a long time ago, that's not an actionable thing under the law. So I, the whole punitive and punishment and compulsion aspect of this is not at all clear to me. I think other issues that I identify are in the IFR proposal, you've got a, you've got budget control, and you've also got unlimited mandates. In other words, they changed it to be included, but not limited to the following mandates. And then they have absolute budget discretion to make, to use the budget of 250,000 as they see fit for their mandates, which are undefined. So I think that's problematic legally. So I think there are a number of issues there and that are complex. And I can certainly, I've given Janice and Laura some sense of what I think those issues are. Just to follow up on what Laura was saying. I, this commission cannot be an independent commission. It is an advisory commission to the, to the city council, which is the elected body of this, of this city, both by state code and by the city charter. So in terms of that independence, I think the resolution as drafted by Burgess and Weiner provides a significant amount of independence in terms of how the commission goes about performing the mandates that it's given. But in terms of unlimited authority to create the mandate or to spend money for whatever those mandates might be, I think that's problematic. That's just kind of a short.
I don't know, I really get confused here. I think what I understood is the subpoena power that they ask for is just kind of recommendation. It's not like something we have to.
No, that was the question that Laura asked. The IFR
recommended.
Changes do not ask for subpoena power. What they ask for, I think, is for the council to use its full persuasion and authority and et cetera to get people to participate in the process who otherwise wouldn't. Frankly, I don't know what that persuasive power is. And I think it's somewhat misleading to suggest that council has it. Because if somebody doesn't want to participate in this process, certainly you can talk to them and you can suggest that they do, but you don't really have any power as council members to compel that.
My, there, in addition to some of the concerns and proposals that have been made, there's a lot of material here. There's a lot of new material. There's, as Counselor Burgess was saying, there are the IFR amendments, and there are points brought up by Supervisor Porter, and there are points brought up by Angie Jordan. I personally would feel much more comfortable if this were deferred, whether we decide to defer it for a special and have a special meeting in a week or what, but so that we, so that we have a chance to to work and provide a sort of composite draft that, to the best of our ability, includes the points that the various people have brought up so that we have one piece of paper for people to look at, both the, both the public and the council. And then wordsmith based on that single document into which we've done our very best to include as much of what the organizations have requested as we possibly can.
I think that's a good idea, Janice, but I think we should also, Eleanor brought up some very good legal implications. And I think we have to keep those in mind also when this is getting put together because we don't want to cross the line with the legality of things.
Yeah, you're talking to two lawyers. I haven't practiced in a long time, but Laura practices.
I just think I agree with what Janice said. You know, it is very important to listen to those comments, especially when it come from people of color and black people. And I think, you know, like whether the comment made by IFR or Supervisor Royce Sam Porter or Angie Jordan, I think all those comments are very, very important that we need to add them. We, those are people who have been affected by this Black Lives Matter issues. So it is very important to listen to them, and we need to see exactly what the change they want so we can add it to this. And if this is going to take more time, and it is 11:21, and I think we're not going to stay here until tomorrow. So we, this month, September half five Tuesday, we can have a special meeting only to discuss this if that's good with the rest of the council. And so we can move to the rest of the item unfinished. But I think I like all the point that IFR and as a community member, there is during public comment. And I think it is really worth considering them.
I would agree, and I think Janice, you know, and I think Laura was headed this way too, and with what you've said, Maz. I think there is so much new material here, and I had trouble at first figuring out what version was coming from where and what people were referring to and things. And, you know, Pauline said, what are we voting on? Well, yeah, we can't wordsmith this whole thing tonight. And there's also some potential issues with some of the points they made in terms of the amount of independence and those kinds of things. I guess what I would encourage would be for Councilors Weiner and Burgess to work with the city attorney with the edits that have been presented to give us a quote "final draft" to really work from. And if there are suggestions and points that were in some of these submissions from the public that are not included, then to please give us an explanation of why those things were left out. Either why you think they don't work or why they aren't legal so that we know what those changes are from what has been presented. And that way we have a framework to work from. And, you know, I don't know if, if that can be done in two weeks. I would love to see that in our next meeting so that we can continue the process. I know there's already a lot of frustration with the public and feeling like we aren't committed and that we're stalling and that sort of stuff, which I think is the furthest thing from the truth. But yeah, if that's possible to have it done and look at this again in two weeks, I think that would be great.
And we had a little bit of conversation at one point about sort of Janice and I being this subcommittee, you know, to carry this forward. Would council be comfortable with us trying to coordinate, you know? Because I think we have some conflicting input as part of the, one of the things that I'm seeing for tonight. And so, you know, the understanding would be we try and as directly as possible work at the same time with those who provided input and with the city attorney to bring forward one draft. Does that seem like where we're headed?
And I think, I think we have, I think we have the input and that it's the tough thing is always getting, is getting all the pieces in, making sure they're legal and getting an acceptable document.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was a lot of information to really digest. And even though I went through and kind of highlighted and wrote comments next to everything, it just, the document was sent yesterday, and so I wasn't aware until late last night that the document was actually there when I went to look at late handouts. And then that's where I was, that's where, when I found it. So I would certainly say, you know, let us defer it until, we don't have to defer until the following Tuesday. Personally, I know next Tuesday and Wednesday I won't be in town for personal matters, but other than that, we can certainly. But I do feel that we need to either dedicate a meeting just to this unless, you know, we feel confident that Counselor Burgess and Weiner will be able to pull all the pieces together in one document and give council enough time to digest anything that's been proposed.
I think it should, whenever we do it, I think it should be fairly high up, fairly early in the agenda so that we have, if it's not a separate meeting, so that we have, so they can really give it our full attention. I mean, I'm confident that we can pull together a draft. And it's also going to be very important that everybody on council look at everything and understand what's in, what's out, why, why, why that's the case. So I think we do, we're really going to need to be able to devote some time to it, no matter how good a job we do drafting it.
I'd suggest for right now, you defer it to the next meeting that we have scheduled, which is the 15th. I mean, there's, if something changes, it can be deferred again. It can be, you can set a special meeting, et cetera. But for right now, I think we just have to get it moved to the next council meeting.
And then maybe we'll, Mayor Pro Tim could work with Jeff on what's on the next meeting.
And we certainly have the authority, mayor and city manager have the authority to move, revise the order of the agenda so we could put it up front.
Okay. All right, so I think I've heard from most everybody, did I get a motion to defer?
I put a motion to defer it to the next meeting.
Second.
All right, and we got a motion in a second. So can we do a voice vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 You oppose? Okay, so we're going to defer that item until the next vote, until the next meeting. And thanks to everybody for being a part of this process. And this is certainly something that we want to be very intentional about in making sure that we get it right from the, from the start because I think that's very, very important. And allow people's voices to still be heard because it's, there's a lot of voices here, which is great, and we welcome them. We're moving on to item number 18, Victim Services Specialist Position.
Can we get a motion to accept correspondence, please?
Absolutely. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
Don't move.
Second.
All right, so I didn't hear who moved it.
I think.
Susan.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by?
Janice.
Weiner? All right. And all in favor, wait, voice, we'll do a voice with this one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, moving on to item number 18, Victim Services Specialist Position. Resolution amended budgeted positions in the police department and by deleting one full-time police officer position and adding one full-time victim services specialist position and amending the Ask Me Pay Plan by adding the position Victim Services Specialist to grade 11. Can I get a motion to approve?
So. Second.
Taylor.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by Taylor, I hope that's what I heard. And staff presentation.
Thank you, mayor and council. There's a fairly lengthy staff report, I guess, relative to what you're used to seeing with some background on this item. And given that it's 11:30, I'm going to be fairly brief in my remarks. For the last couple of years, the Iowa City Police Department has been working really hard to increase the support network that we have for victims of crime. We've done this through the aid of a federal grant that's allowed us to enhance our training, to have experts in the field help revise our policies, and through intentional efforts to better collaborate with local social service agencies that provide critical support to victims of crime as well. And over the last year, we've been working with the University of Denver to have a licensed master of social work practicum student, serve as a victim services coordinator. That was a grant-funded position that has since expired, or that grant has since been closed out. And our department saw great value in that position. They advocated for that position during the last budget process. And I did not recommend the filling of that position due to other resources. As I've, we've all had a lot of discussions in the community about policing and how we can enhance the police department. I'm asking for a bit of a do-over here on my call. And what I'd like to do is remove a vacant. Um, what I'd like to do is, um, remove a vacant, uh, police officer position. And, um, uh, fill it with this, uh, civilian victim services position. Um, I, I do believe, um, that it provides a, a, a critical, critical. Um, piece, uh, to, um, what we hope is a very comprehensive, uh, set of services that the department offers. We want to make sure it's in our mission statement that we're empowering victims of, of crime, uh, through excellence and service. So. Um, if you move forward with this tonight, again, you will eliminate one police officer position, you'll approve this, uh, civilian, uh, social work position. And, um, we will begin to finalize the, uh, job description, um, uh, after talking with. Uh, some of our, again, partners in the community outside of the police department that, that provide. Um, critical services to, to victims as well. So. I'm happy to try to answer any more questions, uh, as I skip through a lot of the details. Um, I hope you, um, saw the, um, support letter because there was a lot of, uh, good commentary, uh, in that support letter, um, from. Uh, the Domestic Violence Intervention Program. Um, but with your approval, um, we would move to hire this position. Um, uh, yet this fall, uh, so we'd move pretty quickly on this position.
So Jeff, this, uh, sounds as though it's, uh, basically would be a social worker type of position then. So. Uh, the qualifications, uh, and experience and requirement would be, uh, as a social worker, probably?
That's correct. Yes. And that, that, um, individual would, would just be that constant presence in the department to. Always help train officers, support officers, um, look at our policies, again, build relationships in the community. Um, and really kind of be there for those victims of crime to help connect them to whatever they need. Uh, to get through the traumatic experience that they've gone through.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jeff? All right. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. And if you're on the phone, press star nine and I will call on you. Seeing no one, uh, council discussion?
No, there is some people.
Oh, I am so sorry. My, uh, my screen was down a little bit, so I didn't see the, sorry about that. We're gonna call Chris, uh, Christie. Uh, fi- followed by. Uh. Leanna, Leanna.
Hi, Mayor Teague. Uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you so much. And it's so good to talk to you and to the council members. Um, I just wanted to take a minute to say that we appreciate this opportunity and support. Um, this movement forward for the police department. We've had a very strong 20-year relationship. Um, educating, working with and creating opportunities for victims to have, um, more effective resources. And more appropriate accountability within our criminal justice system. Um, with that said, um, we're also in a, um. Very crucial point in our community's, um, life and experience in looking at Black Lives Matters. And really addressing, um, uh, systemic racism. I think that this position has some opportunities to look at how. Uh, law enforcement, um, uh, produce peace and support peace, uh, and care within our community. I think it's also a really great opportunity to look at. How, um, uh, trauma affects law enforcement officers. I think that I've outlined some of this. Um, in my letter, but I think one piece that I do want to pull out of the letter is to talk about the nuance of bringing. Um, uh, I don't want to call them conflicting because I don't believe they're conflicting philosophies per se. But ethics and, um, uh, mission and philosophical base of, of disparate professions can have an impact. And that's why I think it's really critical to be connected with, uh, professionals in the community who, um, work with victim services. And who have shared their, their expertise across now our community, but others. Um, I think that it's a very nuanced issue and can have a significant impact on the success of this position. And so, um, I would really encourage, uh, the city and the police department. To build on the collaborations that they've worked so hard on.
Thank you, Christie. And Leanna?
Thank you. Um, yeah, you have my name right the first time, mayor. So I appreciate it. Uh, Leanna's good. Uh, yeah, so I would first of all like to thank you guys for including this line item on the agenda for tonight. Um, I would like to stress the importance, especially with, as we're talking about restructuring the police department, how important of. Um, a position this is to be including, uh, within the ICPD itself. Uh, but more importantly, how this, I believe, is only a start. Uh, there is many different types of victims we need to bear in mind, whether we're, we're talking specifically about domestic violence or, um, mental health issues or. Um, even substance, uh, substance abuse, all of those things, police officers traditionally deal with when they're called onto the scene, but they do not have the training for it. Right? So I don't know if within your packets, it specifies specifically what victim services specialist means and what their specific allocation. Um, and qualifications need to be other than quote unquote a social worker. Uh, but there needs to be, I suppose, moving forward, also a greater dialogue into, again, in this formal. Capacity of restructuring the police department of including various forms of victim specialists, um, in all these different. Capacities that that potentially could involve, um, it sounded a little bit, the discourse that was had before the, um, community. Or the, before the stage was open to the community, that the services specialist would be. Working and training the police officers as opposed to constantly being on scene whenever certain types of, um, incidences are called in. Again, if, uh, moving forward, if. The, the council work to restructure the department to include more types of victim services specialists, it would be, I think, incredibly important. To have them go on to the scene, um, and respond to these certain types of calls. That's the entire premise of restructuring the police force. So again, I just want to voice my approval specifically on this. I think this is a great step moving forward, but I also want to stress the importance as well about. Rethinking how we are going to better and continue this resolution moving forward. Um, in the best capacity for our community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Katie, welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council. I just wanted to say, uh, commend city staff first of all for this great, uh, opportunity with the victim services. Option in the PD and also show that it really could be a model for, or different forms, uh, including street outreach potentially. And other anti-homelessness initiatives that IFRS referenced in their goals. I think it's an incredible model and it's one that we hope will continue and I really appreciate city staff. Uh, taking the lead and, and launching this program.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council? Seeing no one, council discussion?
Well, I.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, thanks, Pauline. I'm very supportive of this. Um, I think this is a direction that I, a lot of us, I think, have kind of talked about as we're talking about restructuring the police. In looking at what other kinds of professionals and services, um, that we need to have involved that will, uh, be better suited and have that kind of training. Uh, in certain calls, uh, for the neon 911 calls and to avoid some of that, uh, contact that we have now that can escalate. For certain people. So I think this is just a robust, uh, with one position and we'll see, um, what other changes we also make as we move forward.
I'm also very much in favor of this, um, change in the position, uh, from the, uh, PD position to this, uh, victim services, uh, specialist. And I think the letter and support from DVIP is, is very important and, and probably indicates that there, there is a strong need for this position. Uh, so I think that's, uh, a very high recommendation from them and I'm in favor of this.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that the memo, um, supporting this position indicated that not just DVIP, but also the rape, the victim advocacy program. And the NISAA African Family Services. Um, all three of these community partners have voiced their support for this position. Um, at the police department and they will be consulted on the final job description to ensure that it's meeting the needs of all victims. Um, just to relate to what, um, one of our callers said. So. And I also just want to highlight how cool it is that we're do, able to do this now and be so, um, flexible in, in having this. Uh, position brought back before us, um, or brought before us when, you know, circumstances were a little bit different and now we have this opportunity. So immediately, that's really great.
Great.
I agree with everything.
One interesting comment I thought was, um. This, this idea that, uh, the, the specialist would also be able to provide trauma support for the law enforcement officers themselves. That's. You know, I think we all understand how difficult. Being a police officer can be. So to have someone working for the department that's not only working on. Victim support, uh, externally, but also internally, I think is, is a, a very interesting insight. On the part of, um, DVIP and Christie. Well, I certainly am appreciative of this and, um, happy that we are able to vote on it now. So, any other?
Yeah, I hope everyone, but everyone said, and I think this is a good move. Uh, to have, uh, especially during this time while we're thinking about restructuring the police department, we need those kind of civilian positions. And, um, also I'm really looking forward, uh, to another position that I've been talking to Jeff about it. Or why, uh, we can get like, uh, civilian position for community, immigrant community outreach, rich position. Uh, because I think this is needed in the community and we've been seeing that the police always is when they have something in the com- uh, immigrant community. They have to have a help of, uh, you know, a person from the community. So I hope we can have another position like this in the future. Whether it is by the staff or by the new police commission that we're gonna create soon.
Yeah. I mean, I think the only thing I'd add is I think that, that, that we probably all recognize that. This is the direction we want to go. This is a start. It's not an end. Really happy to see it on the agenda.
All right. Are we ready to make a vote?
Yes.
Great. Roll call, please.
Ms.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Motion passed to seven to zero. Item number 19, procurement of Axon Taser seven conducted energy device bundles. Resolution authorizing the procurement of Axon Taser seven conducted energy device bundles for the city of Iowa City. Can I get a motion to approve?
So.
Second.
Uh, moved by Mims, seconded by, uh, I'm sorry, moved by Sally, seconded by Mims. All right, staff, uh, presentation on this.
Um, mayor and council, this item, uh, was deferred from your last meeting. Um, I just want to offer a quick clarification, um, and, uh, there is a supplemental, supplemental memo from. Uh, our interim chief of police Denise Brotherton on this. Um, so if you haven't had a chance to look at that, I'd encourage you to. Um, there's been some confusion on the, on the cost, the, uh, the total cost is stated. I just want to, um, uh. Let you know that that's not an annual cost, that's the cost over five years. Uh, so there'd be equal payments. Uh, totaling 230 over the five-year period. Um. The reason that this item was deferred at your last meeting was because you wanted to see the, uh, inventory of military-grade equipment, uh, that's. Um, uh, the Iowa City Police Department has. Um, I was not able to, to, uh, finalize that report and get that out in your information packet. Um, and so you still don't have that information. Um, you, you are certainly welcome to vote on this tonight. It was deferred to this. Um, but, um, that same predicament exists in which you don't have that, uh, list of that military-grade equipment. So. If that is important in your decision-making criteria, uh, more important context for you to have, uh, then you'll need to defer this to your next meeting.
Um. Well, I think we do have, um. I don't know if council want to go ahead and allow public comments with, which we, we should allow public comment. But I would think that based on, um, what we, why we deferred it. My assumption is that there would be another motion to defer it again, but we're gonna go to public comment. Um. Did you have a comment, Mayor Protem?
Yes, well, I don't know, but my intention to, was to defer it, not to, not that, but I guess. Thinking that we just need to postpone it. That's what I'm really thinking, but let us hear from the public.
Sure, sure. All right. So we're gonna go, go to, uh, public discussion. So anybody that wants to. Address this topic, you can do it at this time. We asked that you keep your comments three to five minutes. We're gonna, uh, start with Leanna and then with David.
Hi, yes. Um, so on this topic, I definitely agree. It does need to be postponed. However, I, earlier tonight, there was a lot of discourse when we were talking about the bow hunting resolution. Um, about council was saying that their alignment and their priorities was to maintain with their previous, um, agreement with the state. Correct? So moving forward, the, this recent amendment to add to the budget, um, $250,000 over the next five years to replace 69 tasers. Was added long after you had approved the June 16th resolutions. Now, at that time, you made a commitment to work to restructure the police department. So whether or not you move forward on accepting and replacing the 69 tasers, outdated tasers. Is irrelevant until discourse has begun on how that restructuring is set to take place. If that has not occurred and movement has, um, I guess the motion has passed and you all approved this resolution to fund the police department in this manner. That is a show of bad faith. That is a show of the, um, I don't want to say delegitimization of council, but that is a show of. For lack of better words, at the moment, it's been a long, right? Uh, bad faith on council's behalf. You made a commitment to talk about and have discourse regarding how to restructure the police department. And within that matter of this discourse, to keep pushing that further and further down the line, but in the interim to stop and to say that you are willing to allocate. From the people's taxes, from your city's taxes, $250,000 to fund the police department. When you made a commitment to work on restructuring that fundamentally, that is bad faith. That is absolutely unacceptable on behalf of council to do something like that to the public when earlier they had made a prior commitment. And as we saw tonight, if you're willing to do that and prioritize the state over, and the previous, um. Uh, agreement with the state over your current constituency's demands, then I highly, highly. Would assume that would be a similar case here where you choose to maintain, um, your, the, the, your first agreement with the people. As opposed to any later addendums that other people may bring up as concerns. Um, so again, it's a matter of hypocrisy and it's a matter of listening to your constituents. And I really urge you to think twice moving forward, um, about when exactly you do decide to vote on this resolution. So, thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna go to David, followed by Oscar.
Thank you, mayor, and, uh, thank you, council, for staying up late with us and letting us comment on all of these different things. Really appreciate that. Um, so just wanna, uh, voice support, um, in postponing this decision. You know, at, at the end of the day, I think we have to decide whether we want to upgrade the weapons used against us or whether we want to upgrade the things that are gonna protect us from needing the police in the first place. Um, so we had some good discussions I heard from councillor Mims last week, um, you know, talking about the, the research that looks at, you know, what tasers can do to de-escalate, things like that. Um, and while the research is pretty clear about that, the tasers can de-escalate, um, and, and lead to less use of higher force weapons. We also know that tasers and other weapons. Um, other non-lethal weapons are used disproportionately against people of color, especially young people of color. Um, and the things that we, we don't know about those academic studies is what would happen differently? If instead of a taser, we used some of the other things that IFRS proposing that I think city council has been talking more and more about. And that's like, what happens if a peer professional comes in to, to navigate the situation? What happens if a mental health professional comes in to navigate the situation if someone's having a, um. Mental health reaction, if it's something like, uh, schizophrenia or something, you know, that, that's not something a police officer with a taser is gonna know how to handle, but a mental health professional could. And so while the research points in one direction, it's, it's, uh, it's limited in its scope to explain everything. And so, you know, before we say we're ready to upgrade everything, um, let's really think seriously about some of this forward-looking progress that we're talking about making. And, and let's try some of this, right? I mean, I think we have a lot of community support and even council support around this. So, um, let's. So let's, let's put this off. Let's try some new things that, that don't require violence. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Renee, followed by Oscar.
Hi, I just wanted to second Leanna's and David's sentiments with regards to, you know, council moving on, moving forward with this in terms of allocating this money or funding this, giving this money to the ICPD for these new tasers is really a show of hypocrisy to the Black Lives Matter resolution that council passed in June. And had we actually had any progress done in terms of our police demands, I, I personally believe that, and even the creation of the police committee, I don't think that we would be having this conversation right now. To me personally, it feels like any work has been purposely delayed with the police committee so that this discussion regarding this three hundred thousand dollar allocation would happen first. And it's frankly disheartening to see that as council continues to claim that they're trying to commit to the Black Lives Matter movement in the press and whatsoever, that they're consistently backtracking in terms of the action that they are taking physically in council. And I think this just again brings up, you know, another reason for why people continue to protest every, every week out on the streets of Iowa City. They have not seen any tangible change. And I think this is, this is one of those first steps that if council truly, again, like what Leanna said earlier, truly is listening to their constituents and makes the changes that have, people have been asking for, that is, that would be a sign of good faith. But again, I'm urging you guys to listen to your constituents and listening, to listen to everyone in the community who does not support this further, you know, contribution to violence within our communities. It is not the right answer for the crises that happen in any way. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council?
Hi there. I'm Oscar. Thank you for letting me speak, Mayor, and letting me speak to the council. I appreciate your hard work and patience on this very long night. Before I get started, I'd just like to thank the Iowa Freedom Matters for their endless hard work because dozens of people would not be on this meeting asking for accountability if it weren't for them. So thank you to them. And also I'd like to quickly uplift Leanna's and Renee's comments about this being a bad show of faith. Multiple times during this meeting, city council talked about trying to rebuild trust and faith with their citizens. How can we believe that to be true when they're debating about whether to give more money to the police? When previously you guys have stated time and time again that you want to restructure the police. So I'd really like you guys to consider that tonight about how you're already breaking that kind of like show of faith right there with your citizens. But to get started, I'd just like to talk about my approval for deferring this line item and then also my disapproval for any money allocated to tasers. Just a couple of things. Tasers are not as effective as typically reported and when they fail to work, police often just defer to their guns instead. And so police tend to become more aggressive after using tasers, which suggests that these devices only make a bad situation much, much worse. Secondly, there are a few studies that I looked up while you guys were talking about the here that I checked out that show that tasers don't actually reduce police use of firearms, which is one of the common misconceptions that exists. And then thirdly, I'd like to point out that using tasers is no less dangerous to citizens as they can seriously injure people and people can easily die because of them too. I mean, just think about, imagine being shooting with a taser and then immediately falling and possibly injuring your body while that happening. And so I'd just like to say ultimately that this issue truly lies with police restraint and accountability. Giving the police department thousands of more dollars for these weapons would only exacerbate and ignore the systematic issues that lie with ICPD in our city. So thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to have Brian, followed by Supervisor Roy San Porter.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Alrighty, well, thank you for having me. And I would just like to raise a few concerns now about the, the taser bundle as a whole. One being the effectiveness of the taser is that although the taser seven, which the police would be purchasing here, are a new design and have a more close range effectiveness, which is where tasers were not as effective in earlier models, it is still only effective at four feet, whereas most of the times where tasers are used, a little over fifty percent are within three feet of the distance. And on top of that, the effectiveness listed by Axon has consistently been higher than what the actual effectiveness reported by agent, police agencies around the country. Anywhere from ten to twenty percent higher than what agencies actually list. And then on the bundle side of things where there's a, it was listed that there's a website. I believe it's called evidence.com that Axon uses as a cloud service that the police can upload information to. I believe that there are grounds for privacy concerns on there in their user agreement. On page one, on the first part of the account content and use of services, it says that, excuse me, I must find it here. Here we go. It says that you, as in the person using these services, specifically give us, meaning Axon, prop, it specifically give us the following permissions. You grant us non-exclusive, transferable, irrevocable, royalty-free, sub-leasable, worldwide license to use any intellectual property content that you post on or in connection with the services. The services being that website. And I think that that could possibly be used in violation with any Iowa privacy laws surrounding information gathered on criminal activity or used in criminal proceedings. And then finally, in evidence that is held on here, there is, on their help center, there is a section called removing evidence restriction where there is a very easy way to remove evident, remove, edit and delete evidence that is posted onto this site. Where there's a three-step process where they go into a setting that they remove the restriction on really, on deleting evidence and then go back to the page. The only thing about that being that is just that there's a notification sent to those who can view the evidence that the restriction on that has been changed.
Thank you, Brian. Supervisor Roy San Porter. Hello. And hello. Your mic is off. There you go.
Every time it comes to me, it does this. I don't know why. But I do want to read something that I read, pulled up as well. And it says tasers have become an essential tool for police, but how effective are they? An APM reports investigation finds that officers in some big cities rated tasers as unreliable up to forty percent of the time and in three large departments. Newer models were less effective than older ones. In two hundred and fifty eight cases over three years, a taser failed to subdue someone who was then shot and killed by police. And I just want to say at a time like this, having this piece come up on city council right now, at a time when we're losing folks, people are being, our black people are being killed by the police. Not one time are the police pulling out tasers or using tasers to see if they fail or not fail. It's just straight go for the guns. But at a time like this right now, when Black Lives Matter, I don't think, right now, I, I just think that the council need to think about how everybody's heart is feeling right now. And when you come showing up talking about purchasing two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars worth of tasers, that's a big no-no. I'm speaking on behalf of my black people. Because right now, we don't want, not only do we want to be shot, but we don't, we don't want to be tasered neither. Hopefully, there can be another tactic used, but that's a lot of money to be thinking about right now. And I'm just going to, me personally, say no, you truly need to think about it. And if we're talking about truth and reconciliation and we're talking about Black Lives Matter, this is something that needs to be thought about. And that's what I'm asking. Please think about the tasers. This is, this is for me a big no-no and I'm gonna stop.
Thank you. Maya, followed by Kelsey.
Hello. I just want to say really quickly that you should absolutely defer this vote and that IFR is absolutely right. It would be so hypocritical of you guys to say that you support their demands and then turn around and fund the police department with weapons that will be used to police brown and black bodies. Please do not approve of these tasers. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelsey, welcome.
Hi, Mayor Teagan, City Council. I just want to start off by thanking you all for your dedication to the process and involving all of our community members to participate and be able to express their opinions and thoughts in this process. I know it's a really late night, so I'm going to keep this brief. But thank you so much for all of your dedication. It really does mean a lot and it does help inform the process and allow the system to work the way that it's supposed to, although it doesn't always work as fast as we would hope it, it, it could. I just want to say, I mean, and I know it's not a popular opinion right now, I don't value the use of violence. However, there's a lot more things on the streets right now that I'm concerned about that, that tasers could be beneficial for that don't include the, the Black Lives Matter protests. When you divide the cost of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over five years, you're looking at fifty thousand dollars a year. That doesn't even come close to equalling what it would cost to provide a social worker. A social worker, a licensed social worker, you're looking at fifty thousand dollars a year in, in just base salary, not including salary or not including the benefits and all of the extra things that come along with hiring a person and putting them in a department, supplies, materials, fringe benefits, transportation. There, there's a lot of costs. You're looking at twice as much to, to just provide one social worker for that amount of, of, of cost. And there are, there are safety concerns that sometimes warrant the use of a taser. I am pro Black Lives Matter. I am pro equality, pro inclusion. That is my life. That is what I stand for. However, there are benefits to being able to protect our community and, and I do believe that we can be pro Black Lives Matter and pro safety at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council discussion. Out there.
If I may, anticipating you're, you're going to be deferring this vote, I, I would recommend now that you, you defer the vote indefinitely and not to your next meeting. I, I'd like a little bit more time to, to contemplate on this and, and if, if we decide to come back and seek approval of the purchase of this bundle, I, I, I don't think it would be at your next meeting. So I'd, I'd like some more time to, to just sit down with the department and talk through this. So if, if your intent is to defer, I would suggest you do so indefinitely and allow us that time.
I, I would be in favor of that.
I, I would be too. And, and I did want to share with everyone something I, I ran across while looking up the use of force on various police departments documentation, shall we say. It was a, an alternative that is now being looked at to tasers providing that a similar function and that is, you know, providing remote constraint. And it, the, in fact, it's referred to in the, in these use of force documents, looking at the one by City of Minneapolis. It's referred to as a remote restraint device. The brand name is Bola Wrap, which kind of describes what it does. It has these eight-foot-long tethers which are projected from, from a gun-like device which wraps around and immobilizes the legs or torso of an individual. And so it's not, it's not as reliant on pain to, you know, to control the behavior of the individual. It's, it's actually physically immobilizing them. It's something that cities are studying and looking at, or in some cases have adopted, like the city of Minneapolis. So it's a, it's an alternative to the taser that at least in the brief time that I've had to look, look at it, seems like a personally a much preferable, just based on the, the, the device itself to the tasers. It's not a stun gun. It's, it's actually these, you know, these tethers which wrap around the, you know, the legs or torso of an individual. So it's a very different kind of restraint than what, what the taser does. So it, it could be something that we could look at in this indefinite deferral phase that we're considering.
Any other?
Oh, who wanted to talk? I was just going to say that I appreciate that information that John just shared about alternative devices that might not be as invasive as tasers. And I certainly believe that, that it wouldn't hurt to look into other options such as that.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
To defer indefinitely?
I'll second that.
Great.
Yeah.
All right. Are we ready to vote?
I guess yes.
Roll call, please. Or is Eleanor there? You're muted.
You can do a voice vote on this if you want, Mayor, but.
All right, we'll do a voice, a, a, a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven to zero. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence? Moved by Sally.
Second, by Thomas.
Seconded by Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. Moving on to item number twenty, announcement of vacancies new. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be eighteen years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Climate and zoning commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. And applications must be received by five PM on October thirteenth, twenty twenty. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
Second.
All right, we got to move in a second. Roll call, please. Actually, let's just do a, a voice vote to accept correspondence. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. Moving on to item number twenty one, announcements of vacancies previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be eighteen years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Liberty Rights Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term plus a three-year term. Applications must be received by five PM September twenty ninth, twenty twenty. Climate Action Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term plus a three-year term. Applications must be received by five PM September eighth, twenty twenty. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustments, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, North Side, one vacancy. Historic Preservation Commission, North Side, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Woodlawn, one vacancy to fill a unexpired term. Telecommunications Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. Alright, we are at um, item number twenty-three, which is gonna be, uh, actually twenty-two. We're gonna, we're gonna talk to Ryan. Hello, Ryan.
Good, very late evening, council. Um, so I will keep my statements brief. Um, so first I just wanted to report that the current um, number of cases that have been self-reported at the university um, since August eighteenth are up to um, nine hundred and twenty-two students and thirteen employees. Um, and we currently have in the dorms, um, seventeen students who are in quarantine, meaning that they have been exposed to a positive case. And seventy-eight students who are in isolation, meaning that they have tested positive. Um, and so they are on isolation floors in those dorms that have been set aside for those cases. Um, as well, because of this increase, all student engagement activities, um, clubs, et cetera, have all gone virtual. Um, and no in-person meetings are allowed anymore. Um, so with that being said, um, of course, there's still in-person classes. It's currently about seventy-three, seventy-six percent of credit hours are online. However, that still leaves a quarter of them in person. Um, USG sent out a letter to the administration over a month ago now, um, supporting the move to online classes. And we are still working to push the administration to do that and to push the critical incident management team to go online, uh, as we have heard an outcry from students saying that they do not feel safe to going to in-person classes. And obviously with the drastic rising cases and us being the number two or number one uh, hotspot in the country, this is um, disturbing to us, um, that we still have in-person classes. We are pleased with the governor's order um, to close the bars and we hope that that will help slow the cases. Um, and we still wanna encourage students, please do not be having major parties, major social gatherings off-campus. I know I'm a student. I spent six months isolated from my friends. It's easy to wanna go out and, and say hi to people, but please keep your groups small. Um, and don't go to, you know, thirty-person gatherings because that's going to just increase the amount of cases even more. Um, and lastly, I just wanted to again, uh, state uh, USG support for IFR and the Black Lives Matter um, pro-student protesters and, and for the movement and say that we support um, the actions that council is taking and that we um, support everything that the students are asking for and making changes to the police department, making changes to how the city addresses uh, racial issues. Um, and so we're very pleased to see that moving forward and we um, just wanted to reissue that statement of support. Um, but that's all for me tonight. Thank you, council.
Ryan, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Like, y- you just gave us a report about how many people has been quarantined and isolated. Uh, is that means the university are testing the student when they come? That's how you found out?
No, so um, the, you, students can get a test through student health, um, which is connected to UIHC. And um, in fact, I was tested um, this past week and I was luckily negative. But um, I have been quarantined uh, since last week due to being exposed to a positive case. Um, so I've personally gone through that experience, but the university's not mandating testing or anything. Um, when a student is tested and tests positive or is told that they have been exposed to a case, there's a form on the university website to self-report that. Um, so I self-reported that I had been exposed to a case. Those who have tested positive can self-report. Um, and if they are in the dorms, then they are moved to, if they are just exposed, they can quarantine in their own dorm room. And if they are a positive case, they are moved to an isolation dorm, um, which are separate floors from the rest of the residents. So, these, these might not, these might even, are likely less than the actual numbers because they're self-reported. So, students don't fill out the form, then um, the numbers aren't correct. And actually, that, those numbers are from uh, yesterday and so they will be sending out new numbers tomorrow. So, I suspect that they will have gone up.
That is only voluntarily. You don't have to.
Yes.
Alright, thank you, Ryan. Great. Um, well, we are definitely getting down to the end of the night. Um, are there any council, city council updates that you must share right now?
Oh, not, not really an update. Not, I'll be, I'll be really quick, but I would be remiss if I didn't remind people that uh, next Monday, September seventh is Labor Day. Uh, it was established way back in eighteen ninety-four as a federal holiday. Uh, and normally it would be a time for parades and picnics and gatherings. And the Iowa City Federation of Laborer has had a Labor Day picnic out at City Park every year for many, many years and hundreds of people would, would come and celebrate all the accomplishments of organized labor. Uh, but of course, this year due to uh, the threat of COVID nineteen, uh, for the safety and well-being of everybody, uh, the picnic will not be held. Um, so at this time, I'd just like to thank all my uh, union brothers and sisters and all workers uh, for everything that they do to continue to contribute to the strength and well-being of our own country. Uh, I even saw and, and I'll remind people that there are some of the Monday, I'm, I happen to be on the Monday um, trash pickup, uh, that those workers are going to be out there on, on Labor Day. So, thank you to them for continuing to do their job. But, but the, for those of you out there, um, please, if you do celebrate, uh, do so safely, remembering to maintain social distancing, uh, wear a mask when possible, uh, and just please stay safe, uh, stay well and happy Labor Day.
One, one sentence, which is the CDC has issued um, a, a sweeping temporary halt on evictions nationwide through the end of December.
I guess, you know, the, I don't have any update, but the only thing that I really have to say it because we cannot just like, ignore it like that. Uh, so I, I really don't like the way that Iowa City Police Department is arresting the protesters. They arrest over seven people. We need to talk about that. We need to talk about it and we need to exactly figure out how can we do about those charges. I don't know when. It is next, now this, we are breaking the record, going to the next day. This is the first time I attend council meeting that go after twelve midnight. But we don't have to ignore what happened yesterday and the day before yesterday.
Well, I, 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 I'm gonna just jump, uh, jump in there only because uh, one, um, is an item that is not on our agenda.
Yes, I know. That's why I said, we need some time. I'm not talking about it right now, of course, mayor.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I guess for me, I will make one statement and I guess, I'm gonna make a statement because you made it. Um, after we did what we, um, we released the, we submitted a letter to have charges released the last time. At least for myself, I made it very clear that any of those actions that were going against um, uh, illegal things, driving with a license plate, um, spray painting people personal properties or governmental properties, at least for me, uh, you know, the, because of the change in the way that the protesters were going, then uh, I was under the assumption that that behavior would not continue at all. So, uh, that's where I was. Um, but if those behaviors are starting, then is, is not right. Is, is just not right.
Well, I guess we need to put it on sometime on that again, then everybody can talk about it. At, at the end of the day, mayor, you are only one vote.
Oh, no. And, and yeah, and that's why, no, you're exactly right. And I, I just may mention that the last time, um, at least that was the expectation, but we can certainly put this on. Um, we can actually have it during our work session. And we can have the conversation there because we have a Black Lives Matter item there.
Sure. Thank you.
Alright, great, thanks. Alright, uh, city manager, anything from you additional?
Uh, just because I see Supervisor Porter may still be on the call. I just wanna say thank you to Johnson County for all the support they provided us during the storm cleanup. They, in the last month, they've been uh, working the streets of Iowa City, helping clear trees uh, with our crews. And uh, we've been able to make quick work through the city in large part because of Johnson County's help. So Supervisor Porter, if you're listening, please uh, know we're very appreciative and, and pass that along to, to your colleagues on the board.
Thank you. Uh, Ashley, Assistant City Manager.
I just wanted to use the opportunity to say good morning and nothing else at this time.
Great, it is morning. Alright, uh, City Attorney Eleanor.
Oh, nothing from me.
Alright, City Clerk.
Nothing from me.
Alright, we're going to adjourn if I get a motion. Uh, we're gonna adjoint to work session. Um, we just have two items, I think, there remaining.
So moved.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we are um, going back to our work session which started yesterday.